The right of the public to watch. Standing for one and five. By the way, you're certified from the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One more silence please. Part of the time. How about the agenda?
I just got one small change to the agenda, um, under item I, um, to the Public Safety Committee update, um, the items that I'm coming to discuss sort of evolved into our own agenda items now. So, um, that could be eliminated and number five can move up to four and help the file. That's the only change that I have. I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Well, before that, I would, I would just assume not going to my closing meeting this afternoon, uh, down on the agenda here, closed meeting for board and for performance discussion. And it's an annual thing and you've already done that.
Obviously, I asked for this, my agent, but I asked for this after discussion with the chairman about the, there was no more shit to do after. We had a conversation about one. He instructed me to ask you if you were saying something to do with it. I guess this is something making me vote in the round on time cost, but I question what's in the reason for a closed session. It seems to us more complicated. But with all due respect, we have to keep that in custody because we don't have a productive discussion in the time we have. Okay, I guess we need to put it on the speaker.
I would just say I'm, I'm not sure what this is about, who this is about, maybe it's not properly disclosed at here. Um, however, I do agree that there is a process for performance review. Typically, there's an annual written review and then there's an opportunity for the board to study that written review and make some comments. If there's something that's come up in the meantime, it almost would seem to mean that the individual board member that has an issue with a particular employee or county might be able to have a conversation with that individual, with the chairman, with the county administrator. If then, if that was the need to move it on to the full board, that'd be fine. I just don't know what's happened or I'm susceptible to this point. So, I, I think, I'm concerned that if we just jump into closed session and this particular member may not even know we're talking about them or they may not even know, they may not even be there when we speak about them. We could be opening ourselves up to anything from a grievance to, to a lawsuit. So, I think there may be a better way of going about this than just the board. Going right into closed session for purposes of discussing something that I'm not even sure what it's about or what it's about.
I suspect this is the closed session, sir.
I think there might be, I would hope there would be ways maybe of handling this before you ask the board to go into a closed session. It's tired. That's all I, that's, that's all I'm, that's the only point I think.
I think we have.
We have. We just did, uh, performance reviews. I think we all know that we needed to.
I have real pride in you watching and this is the next step.
I don't know, because I mean, maybe this is about or what's been done to this. I don't think that's any usually.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but this is exactly the next step based on what you just said. It must be happening. So, this is the next step?
It seems like every time we go into closed session, it gets sued.
Well, it's not here. Well, that's not true, of course, sir, because not only have we, we've done that in a closed session, that's it is because we may have done something technically wrong.
We don't do something technically wrong going into a closed session, we don't get sued.
Well, I know we all verified the last closed session, but we were dangerously close to being off topic in that session. And it's, it's pretty, it's, it's not hard to veer off the topic and, uh, it happens too often and it just seems like we could solve our problems in front of the public.
Well, if, if it's an employee, if it's an employee matter, then that is protected by closed, by closed session. So, I would be hesitant to discuss that. However, I would think that there would be other possible remedies before we would have to go into a closed session. And that's my own report, Mr. Frazier.
I appreciate that. I think that we're protecting the employee when we do it, if I were.
Well, it sounded like you had a discussion about the chairman, about how to move the topic forward and his recommendation was to have a portion of the agenda.
His recommendation, I kind of put it on the side of anything, but I think that, uh, that this is the next step in the process. That's spelled out by the supervisor position.
We have a motion, right?
Of a motion and no second one.
Now, could you repeat the, uh, motion and the second? Is it so clear on what we're voting on?
The motion is to approve the agenda as amended, to remove I four, remove I five and I six.
Oh.
Made by Ms. Smith, no second reported.
Do you think I have a second?
No.
I have a second.
Well, we have a motion of a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Chairman, is that, is that motion fair, Mr. Chairman?
I don't believe it passed three to two.
It passed. That's what I recorded. So, we adopted the agenda as, as amended by the motion?
I recorded Mr. Parrish as an aye. Uh, in that case, I'll change my vote.
Gentlemen, you do understand that the buck stops with us and if, if this board cannot resolve issues that need to be resolved, then things spill out into the public arena. That's what we've been wanting for the last three years. And I think employees deserve to have things not discussed in public if it protects them as an employee. And when, when this board deliberately stops that process, then things spill out into the public arena. There's no other way for it to work.
I am just going to say that I'm concerned about how this vote was taken and I would ask if there was an opinion about whether or not there could be a change in a, in a vote after the votes been reported. I'm concerned about that. I don't know if I'm asking a candidate to turn to that or if I'm asking the chair, but I think we better be pretty clear on that. I'm perfectly happy to abide by whatever vote this board is taking, but I'm concerned about what vote we just recorded.
I would just, your ordinance is silent on that process. I don't know how, what you've used. The vote taken, a voice vote that was apparent to be three to two of Mr. Parrish, told Mr. Parrish what I recorded his vote as and he said he was changing his vote, which switched it to a two to three. Question is whether that, there's problems.
It wasn't a roll call, it was just a voice vote. Yeah. And I don't see why a member can't change his mind. All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Gol. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other items?
You still need to adopt your agenda.
I think we just did.
You failed to adopt the agenda as amended, only removing I four.
Ah, correct, correct.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
And I will second that and I believe, so I understand what we're voting on. We are dropping I four and we are dropping the closed session.
That is wrong. We need a closed, closed meeting.
So, we're voting on the same thing we just voted on, isn't it?
Then I'll second.
Motion made a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
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 So, I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the changes, uh, striking out I four.
Can I ask a question?
And we drop the, uh, the closed session item of O one.
That's one of the orders, Mr. Chairman. Did, did you and I not have a discussion on the fifteenth and you told me to ask for this very thing on the agenda?
Yes, I, yeah, I remember that.
But now, when I ask for it and it's on the agenda, you voted against it?
Well, just because it's on the agenda, Mr. Frazier wasn't.
Anyway, I made that motion that we adopt the agenda with Ms. Smith's change and we drop the closed session.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it is the same thing that we discussed.
What you wanted was to get it on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, you just voted on that.
That you voted against it after you told me to ask for it?
I said that was the only problem.
No, you said if you wanted to.
I know exactly what I said, Mr. Parrish.
I'll second, I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, what is it that you did instruct me to do?
I was giving you some information on how to change the agenda.
No, I know how to do an agenda, but we were discussing a specific part of the agenda.
You made it, not me.
So, we have an agenda and now we're changing it. We got a motion and we got a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Any other changes to the agenda?
I think that was voting, approving it as amended, so.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have four sets of minutes before you for approval of the March four regular meeting as well as the budget work sessions on the March thirteenth, eighteenth and twentieth. Apple to, to the comments if you have it.
Uh, Mr. Curry, my only comment is that the minutes of March twentieth reflect that my absence was due to my attendance as the representative for the county at the River Basin Commission meeting, which conflicted with the, uh, work session and budget on twenty March. That could be just noted in the minutes, I would appreciate that.
In the regular meeting minutes on the fourth of March, um, on page two of twenty, Terrence Sutton, his last name is S U T T E N.
What's that, the page?
Page two.
E N.
Yes, sir. That's why I changed. Other than that, I would adopt the minutes, that's all presented.
Is that all four sets?
Yes.
I'd second that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if you may, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is a public comment. Anyone wishing a carry of speed will have the opportunity to do something. Excuse me, could you just let it finish?
I'm sorry.
It's all right, I'm used to it. Anyone wishing a carry of speed will have the opportunity to do something. Raise your hand when, uh, you recognize that your name, your district, and you can comment on any subject and you write those comments through the board. Now, public comment, hold. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Noel Lang, Jackson District. I'm here on behalf of the Rappahannock Food Pantry. I'm the president of the board and the Rappahannock Food Pantry is going to be moving its location. The building we currently are in is, is going to be placed on the market and we feel that the price, asking price plus what it would cost us to bring it up to condition for us to continue there is about the same as it would be to buy a new piece of property and build a brand new building in a better location, more centrally located than the county. Purchases obviously to serve more of our citizens that we are part of. So, I'm not here to ask you any, for anything, here just to inform you that this is our intention. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. Um, I want to remind you all of the great talent that's in this county. Uh, this weekend, I went to see the play Harvey and Harvey was magnificent. Um, one of your members of your board was a supporting actor that's L, L A P D out and John Losinski should be, um, should be on Broadway. The entire cast, the entire cast was wonderful. Uh, the show's still going on next weekend and any of you that have not gone to see it yet should, should attend. It's wonderful to see the amazing talent we have in this county. Uh, second of all, um, the Old Dominion races are next weekend on Saturday. This is another event to support in our neighborhood. There are three, uh, very prominent hunts in our, in our county. We're very lucky to have three and, uh, supporting the steeplechase is a wonderful way to spend a day. And lastly, um, I'm one of those people that stays up late and watches Nightline and, you know, Who Wants to be a Millionaire? And I caught an ad the other night, uh, and I didn't know exactly who it was for immediately, but it was, I was pretty sure as I went on. Um, it was advertising beautiful Virginia mountains. It was advertising, uh, lakes and waterways and, um, cycling, dirt biking and such. And it was an ad for Roanoke, which is the, the east coast center of dirt biking, apparently. We can't afford to do that kind of ad on TV, even late at night, but the fact is that they were really, oh, and it also mentioned beer in the ad too, by the way. They must have some good road rides in there. But anyway, um, they, they had a marvelous, marvelous ad. Um, we need to put some time, money and effort into getting people to recognize how close Rappahannock County is to major metropolitan areas where people can come here and visit. We have wonderful wineries, breweries, et cetera, um, and spectacular views and a great place to live too. So, I think to try to urge people to come here and buy some of our nice real estate. Um, I hope that somewhere in the budget, as you get down to finalizing things, a little bit more goes that kind of way to get us more help for tourism in this county, uh, which we can dearly use every day. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
Spend money for a good time.
Anyone else here to speak? Yes.
Paige Lundy, Jackson District. Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to address me. My questions and comments are directed at Chairman Welsh, Mr. Parrish and Mr. Losinski and relate to the Bragg law lawsuit. Gentlemen, are you aware that two point two thirty seven thirteen, paragraph E, states, and I quote, "The public body shall bear the burden of proof to establish an exclusion by the predominance of the evidence," unquote. That, that what you did in a closed session was in accordance with the FOIA statute. Since the three of you were not present at the January nineteenth twenty seventeen hearing, are you aware that the judge read the statute with punctuation to Mr. Gol, sending an obvious message that Mr. Gol was not properly interpreting the statute? We have endured over two years of your legal team's attempts to get the case to run out on technicalities, including a trip to the Virginia Supreme Court. That has come at significant cost to the taxpayers, somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars, as well as countless hours wasted by county employees, not to mention the acrimony that has resulted during meetings. Finally, now the case is headed to trial, which means the rate of legal expenses has significantly escalated. The sad thing is that all of this could have been avoided. Your lack of understanding of the state laws governing the operation of this board, your reliance on Mr. Luke's poor legal advice, as well as your lack of judgment and poor leadership, has prevented you from acknowledging a relatively minor technical mistake. The situation has now mushroomed into four lawsuits. You have proven that the cover-up is worse than the crime. Do you recall that I recommended you to get a second legal opinion? Your lack of action demonstrates that your personal interests take precedence over good stewardship of the taxpayers' money. Are you aware that your legal team subpoenaed plea for all communicate, quote, "For all communications between you and any person, entity or organization"? Aside from the overly broad and burdensome nature of that subpoena, please explain how a private citizen that was not present during your closed session could possibly have any information that would aid in your burden of proof? Are you aware that I have no responsibility to retain any records associated with the Bragg law lawsuit? Your legal team's actions and consequently yours appear to be as harassment and retaliation for my critical public comments, potentially subject to criminal penalties under two point two thirty-one oh three, paragraph ten. And I quote, "That statute states prohibited contact as," quoting, "Use his public position to retaliate or threaten to retaliate against any person for expressing views on matters of public concern." Now, I originally was going to talk about what you just took off the agenda, but I'll leave it anyway. Later today in your closed session, you are to discuss employee performance. I had hoped that Mr. Gol would be on that list. His poor legal advice is having a significant cost to taxpayers and a significant impact on the acrimonious nature of county politics. Mr. Curry, would you please include my comments in their entirety in the minutes? Thank you very much for your time.
January nineteenth, what year? Was that the one in the Supreme Court?
No, sir. It was right here in front of Judge Sworzy.
Mr. Chairman, pardon my. Yes. Mr. Glenn, how did you know that the performance review today was on Mr. Gol?
I didn't.
Well, then why did you mention his name?
Because I said I hoped it was on him. I had no idea who it was on.
I just find that interesting.
Well, that's good.
Did you listen to what he said? He said he didn't.
Yeah, I did. I did. And it's interesting that he only mentioned Mr. Gol and not anybody else that works.
Because I don't know who you were going to do.
Well, neither do I, actually.
What?
I said neither did I, actually.
Well, that's true too.
Thank you for highlighting that for us. Also, I will tell you, I had a conversation with someone from, I believe, his former town manager.
This is public comment period. This is not a clear.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
I have the floor, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I asked, I asked for time on the floor. Well, I asked for the opportunity.
Just letting you speak.
My, my comments have to do with what Mr. Glennie said and it's typical that board members can respond to what the public says. Now, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to wait until after public comment, I'm happy to do that.
Maybe that'll make Mr. Frazier happy.
I'll wait.
Just remind me, okay?
I'll wait. Oh, I will.
We're conducting the public business, Mr. Chairman, not Mr. Frazier's.
Okay, anybody else here to speak? Anyone else here to speak? Clear public comments, close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a conversation with, uh, someone I believe was the former town manager in the town of Percival and, and followed what happened in Percival over the last few years. It's, uh, another, another community that's in some capra money. They used to put on their county website the amount of dollars, tax dollars that were spent by the public on legal fees. And they got up to about two million dollars. But in full transparency, they put those costs on their website. And I just suggest or put that forward to the board that we may want to do the same thing, if people are that concerned and they should be about how much money is being spent on litigation. And are concerned that parties aren't figuring out a way to sort this out, but more importantly, where the tax dollars are going, I think we ought to, I think we ought to consider doing it ourselves here in the county. People need to know what kind of money's being spent on all these four lawsuits in county. That's my only point.
I guess my only point is that we'll never know now who the closed session is going, was going to be about because we won't be able to have a closed session. So, I mean, I, I don't understand everyone's reluctance to enter into closed session and I don't know what it was about, but I was willing to, um, to see. So, I, I don't think it's appropriate to attack members of the public during public comment over speculative matters. We're supposed to encourage public participation in this process and I'm all for transparency. Please put the numbers on the website. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Could I ask a question, sir?
Yes.
May either, may, may, may either have a question that, that I asked the board members, did y'all know that Mr. Glennie, a private citizen, had been subpoenaed by our attorney?
I was copied on the letter from Walker Jones. That's how I became aware. And I believe I received that letter either Thursday or Friday of last week.
I'm here. I got, I got a letter.
I, I, well, don't, I, I would need to go back and look at the date.
Who all got letters? I didn't get a letter.
They're not a party to the lawsuit?
No, but I'm a member of the board supervisors and it's Brad V B O S, isn't it?
Yes. I received the letter Thursday, but the subpoenas were issued to me and Mr. Glennie on February twenty second.
I got a letter and I had no prior knowledge of anybody being subpoenaed, so, uh, the, I, I trust the attorneys to undo the job, uh, so, I don't know how the sentencing got so at hand. Uh, we were sitting in a closed session, we have our county attorney right there with us, uh, we, you know, uh, if we were doing something wrong, I presume the county attorney will tell us right then and there and stop. None of that, it didn't happen. Uh, we were just doing our job and, uh, for some reason, somebody was fearful of the outcome and they could have. And for some reason, somebody was fearful of the outcome, and they put a lawsuit to put subpoena on our hiring of county attorney. And so, I've got my theories on that, but that's ancient history right now.
You were hiring a county attorney in a closed session?
That's what the whole thing was about.
Had you interviewed people for the position?
Absolutely, we did. Yeah, we had interviewed a bunch of people, including Mr. Son, I don't know, like a half dozen or eight, I can't remember, a couple of years ago. What's the problem?
I was just curious. I mean, I wasn't on the board at the time, so I was just curious.
Right, yeah. So, we are doing the county business. We have to be in closed session, because when you're hiring somebody, it has to be in closed session. And to my knowledge, we made no mistake, mine or otherwise.
But you were making the decision in private session.
Gentlemen.
This will come out in court. This will come out in court.
Yeah, this is proper subject for depositions.
No, no, no. I asked a question, sir. You interrupted the discussion. I asked a question of the board members, if they had prior knowledge for this. That's what we were trying to ask opinions. And nothing that we've discussed so far is not already in the public record. So, I would appreciate you not interrupting us.
Well, I think we can go ahead and move on.
Well, I just asked a question, sir, and I thought that that needed to be addressed as well.
I think so.
I wish you had done that instead of me, sir.
About our school, Dr. Grimes.
Happy April Fool's Day. Your friends in Pantherland. One old March shirt had come in like a lion and snuck out like a limb. It happened really fast. And there was so much that happened this past month, so really excited to share some student accolades to begin with you. Congratulations to four RCHS students, Alec Petty, Bryce Jones, Isael Arpiano, and Stuart Bailey, for being invited to compete in the Governor's Economics and Personal Finance Challenge in Richmond. In order to receive this coveted invitation, teams across the state register, through the state, register and take a 30-question, 35-minute exam. The exams are scored, and the highest-scoring teams throughout the whole state are the ones that are invited to participate in the championships. Only 12 teams from the whole state were selected to compete, and our students were selected. This competition will take place in Richmond next Thursday on April 11th. Our beloved RCHS Scholastic Bowl team placed second on NBC's long-running quiz show, It's Academic, and they will be traveling to compete at the national level in Chicago later this month. Our sixth- and seventh-grade middle-school students participated in their annual science fair, in conjunction with the parent-teacher conferences that were held on March 21st. Students explored topics of interest to high schoolers, searching for answers to these very important scientific questions, such as what are the effects of different-sized soccer balls on accuracy? Are our relatives' fingerprints similar to ours? How does water temperature affect plant growth? And one of my favorites, how do different brushing methods affect the heart rates of horses? Pretty amazing. Our high school panther band had an amazing opportunity to travel to the Big Apple last month on a trip to reform on the deck of the USS Intrepid, the aircraft carrier that was launched in 1943, and remarkably survived five kamikaze attacks and one torpedo strike. The same carrier served in the Cold War and the Vietnam War, before retiring to its Hudson River resting place as a centerpiece of the Intrepid Sea, Air, and Space Museum. Our students had the opportunity to learn more about the ship, as well as visit the 9/11 memorial, the Statue of Liberty, Times Square, and see Chicago on Broadway. Chicago is our spring musical this year, which will take place on April 27th at 7:00 p.m. and April 28th at 3:00 p.m. Be sure to get your tickets by contacting Russell Paulette and Mike Myers at the high school. Advance sales will be available online soon as well. The RCHS seniors took part in a profile of a graduate mock interview event. As part of this initiative, seniors are interviewed by community members and volunteers, as though they're interviewing for a real future job. The students, by this point, have written a resume in their English classes, practiced through peer-to-peer interviews, and attended job interviewing workshops that were offered through our partnership with the extension office. After the mock interview, the community volunteers then provided each student explicit feedback in various areas, such as resume writing, attitude, professionalism, communication, and overall presentation skills. We thank our amazing community volunteers who come out to help us with this event every year. Don't forget that this Wednesday is our School Safety Summit, organized in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, and that will take place on April 3rd, with a special fundraiser dinner beginning at 5:00 p.m., with a keynote address and subsequent sessions starting at 6:00 at the high school. If you'll remember, two of our sessions will be on vaping and substance abuse, to help parents and students understand the dangers associated with each, as well as offer tips for safeguarding the home against misuse. And also, the second will be a special Alice training designed for older students and their parents, teaching lifesaving techniques in case of an active shooter event. Speaking of safety, we would also like to take a moment to thank special guests Sheriff Connie Compton and Commonwealth Attorney Art Goff for the time that they spent with our civics classes last week, explaining their role within the judicial system and in the locality. The presentation truly gave a community-centered local viewpoint of how the judicial system works in the students' own backyard. So, thank you so much. As a precursor to this year's prom and after-prom activities, youth of Virginia speak out, in partnership with the Sheriff's Office and the Virginia State Police, came out to hold a distracted driving simulation event obstacle course down the parking lot of RCHS. I'm told I have the fastest speed in the course. I don't know if I should be proud of that or not. Following the obstacle course, State Superintendent of the Virginia State Police and Rappahannock County's own Colonel Gary Settle spoke to students with the message, "Be smart, be safe, and be sober." Later that week, on Saturday, March 23rd, the prom, Living the Sweet Life, was a huge success. Students looked incredible, classy, and were very well behaved. The after-prom party was absolutely amazing, complete with mock casino games, a mechanical bull, inflatables, live music, and all the food you could eat. I only made it until 1:00 a.m. I had to get up very early for church the next morning, so I had to go home. But we thank our generous community again for providing nearly $7,000 in donations for the purpose of keeping our students safe on prom night. Thank you so much. I hope you were able to see our post on Facebook that our very own Technology and Facilities Director, Dr. Robin Bolt, was recognized in an online blog by Education Superhighway in honor of Women's History Month for her work in bringing fiber to the rural school district. We are very proud of this recognition, and this year, our students and staff are certainly reaping the benefits through one-device usage without all the buffering. So, we're very excited about that. The school board did vote unanimously last month to approve the school budget, as it was presented in the superintendent's report. We will be advocating for full funding in order to support the 4% increase for staff and as well as the full-time social worker position. We hope that you consider the arguments presented in the report when you consider the full county budget. We also like to thank Mr. Curry so much for the work that he has done to incorporate our facilities' needs into his overall capital improvement plan. This type of pre-planning will help us avoid facilities issues like we experienced last year with our H-back in water. So, thank you, Mr. Curry, for your expertise and your analytical approach to budgeting, and also your willingness to work with us as we identify areas that we can strengthen services at the most efficient of us. Really appreciate that. Spring break will be Monday, April 15th through April 22nd, pending any more weather events that happen. Hopefully, no more. And finally, March kicked off our spring sports season, and we were honored to have celebrity guest pitchers Butch Nindell and Judge Melissa Cuthbert throw the first pitch in the ceremonial home openers of baseball and softball. We hope that you'll come out to see our students in the field, whether it be baseball, softball, soccer, track. The athletic schedule is available on our high school athletics page or on the high school staff calendar. Do you have any questions for me?
You said the mock interviews already happened, or?
Yes, they already did, yes.
Spaghetti dinner on Wednesday night. I talked to Miss Sandborn at the Hamlet Oyster Dinner on Saturday night, and she would want me to put in a special plug. It's for the class of 2023, correct?
That's right, yes.
And it is a fundraiser for them.
It is.
And she has a lot of spaghetti.
She has a lot of spaghetti.
It's only $5. So, please, if you have an opportunity to get over to school early on Wednesday night, please do.
What time is that?
5:00 o'clock on Wednesday night.
Thank you. Well, thank you all so much for your support of the schools. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
Yes, next we have Mr. George Millsaps, the U.S. Census Bureau. I met with Mr. Millsaps in my office this past month, and he has some information to share with the board and the community about the upcoming census. And in addition to his presentation, and I've shared with the board previously, I did include a proclamation in the agenda for deciding if their desire to adopt a census awareness.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members, thank you very much for giving me time. My name is Dr. George Millsaps, and I'm a partnership specialist with U.S. Census. And what I want to tell you is a little bit about how the census works. First off, why do we do it? It's mandated by Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution. We're going to do this every 10 years, and we have. It is used to apportion the seats within the House of Representatives, so states can win and lose representative seats based on the outcome. We also use it at the state local and level for redistricting, so it can impact who represents you here. And one of the major things it does is it helps define the distribution of over $675 billion a year in federal funding. That goes from everything from reduced school launches to road projects, so it's very important. If you look at that same area, I can't give you an exact figure for your county, because every area is different. The lowest range I've seen is $1,500, the highest was $3,000. Richmond estimated that for every person they undercount, it costs them $2,000 a year. You're stuck with that for 10 years, which means it's a $20,000 impact. If you do the math, you undercount 50 people, that's a $1 million impact. So, it's really important we get out and we have everybody complete the census. You look at the next slide, there's an eye test for you. It shows the 50 ways that they use a census. If you love counting, there's actually 48. It's a government document, what kind of say. So, one of the things people wonder about is confidentiality, the stuff that the U.S. Census gets is very closely held. We get information from other agencies, but we do not share with any agency. You can't even get the Supreme Court to subpoena that information, so it's very, very closely held. One of the first things I did when I came on the census, to sit down, okay, now stand back up, raise your hand, and took an O, if I release any information, then I could face up to five years of $250,000 fine. And I'm not doing that, and that's not only when you're a census employee, you hire a lifetime afterwards. That information is distributed on an individual basis until after 72 years. I don't care what they say about 72 years, to be honest with you. If you look at the next slide, there's a little thing about how the U.S. Census works. The first thing we do is we go out and we try to find out where all the households are. This isn't per family, this is per household, and we try to count everyone, even if they do not have a household. What we do next is try to motivate people to respond to the census, and that's the reason I'm here, is to ask for help in that area. Then usually, in April 1st, the next year, you start counting. So, April Fool's Day today is one year from when the census starts. And then we have to report. The U.S. Census will be released to the President no later than December 31st, 2020. And then after that, it's released to Congress, after that, it's released to the states, and then after that, it's released to the public. If you look, there's a little list that shows all the different counties and cities in Virginia, and it shows how Rappahannock did the 2000 compared to the 2010 census. You did quite well as far as the number of people that self-reported. And that is a key thing on this, that 70% or so is how many mailed in their stuff. After that, then we have to hire people to go out and try to get to the count by knocking on doors. It takes an average of five times knocking on a door before you get someone that may answer their stuff. It doesn't mean they have to, although it is a law. Nobody enforces it. If you look at the next sheet, it's a picture of Rappahannock County, and this is on our random outreach mapper. And anybody can get on that online, and you can dig in a lot of stuff on the U.S. Census in there. If you look, the way that this works is the darker the color, eye test provided in the audience, the darker the color, the harder it is for that area to be counted. And so, you're not the easiest to count area, but you're not the hardest to count in this state either. The next page shows some statistics. Supposedly, you can look at those and figure out why these people aren't responding. Obviously, in this area, one of the things is you're rural, so you're not going to have internet service everywhere, and this will be the first time that you'll be able to fill out the census on the internet. So, getting people involved, like the library, the school system, to have places that people can come in, starting March of next year, to start doing the census, and you're going to develop something. The next page is how can you help? One of the biggest things is, is you can create an environment where people will want to respond. There are some things that are barriers for people. For instance, they may not have internet, they may not be able to write very well, see very well, and we try to overcome all those things. You'll be able to call in this year and give your census information over the phone as well, so that should help. If you look at the next thing, we talk about a complete count committee, and a complete count committee is something that you create within your county, and you go out and you try to get people to complete the census. Why form it? Well, somebody from the U.S. Census Bureau saying, hey, you guys should fill this out, they're going to, yeah, right, whatever. If you have your trusted neighbors say it's really important that you fill out the census, those trusted voices within your community, those are the ones that people will listen to, not me. If you look at the next thing, it has a little picture of a table. This must have been in Tulsa, Atlanta, or some large city like that, if you look at the people around the table. And if you look at the number of subcommittees, they have like 16 subcommittees. Well, obviously, that's not the way you should structure it in Rappahannock County. How should you? How you think it should be? So, I would look at the committee and say, we want a complete count committee, we want to have an organization within our area that tries to get people to fill this out, and how you do it is up to you. We can come in and help training, but you actually run it yourself, because that's kind of what we do. What we would like with you is if you would pass a resolution or proclamation today, one year out, saying, hey, we as a county think it's important that everybody is counted. And by everybody, we mean everybody. If they're homeless, they're counted. Whether they're citizens or not, they're counted. And oddly enough, one of the oddest groups that are hard to count are kids under 5. Don't understand, but it's a hard to count population. So, if you look, you have to go out and try to find those people you think are going to be difficult to reach, and find ways that you think they can be reached. Subtle to your questions.
If the board members don't have any questions, I'll place a copy of the proclamation on the screen. It's in the board docs. Basically recognizes the importance of the census and designates today as Census Awareness Day in Rappahannock County. I believe that's the discretion of the board.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Maybe it's more for Mr. Curry. It's a form a complete county committee. Who's responsible for, is that the county administrator who does the responsibility, or?
I've had some discussion on this over the last several months, actually, and talked with the regional commission to think about whether it would be appropriate for them to be involved. It doesn't have to be a local government committee, it doesn't have to be a board-form committee or a county administrator committee. It could be grown out of the community, church representation, different groups that have connectivity to the citizens, as Mr. Millsaps said, through trusted voices. What are the best ways to get the word out to our citizens that the census is important as ramifications in the following 10 years?
Mr. Chairman? That's an excellent question. You can do it as a county. Some counties do form their own, it's a formal thing, which comes with all this FOIA stuff, those kind of things. You can have an organization that's outside of the political structure that does it, and you can also look at a larger group. For the George Washington Regional Commission, they are forming a regional base, because most of their counties are rural, and they just think it's going to be more synergistic to do it that way. And then they'll get like the superintendents together, and they'll get the different social services folks together on a regional level, and then they may have some local stuff, with the exception of the city of Fredericksburg, which is going to do it separate. So, you can structure it any way you want.
Mr. Chairman, I think it starts with us here in the county to show that we think this is very important. So, I'll make the motion that we adopt this proclamation by the board supervisors of Rappahannock County, designating Census Awareness Day. If I need to read that, or the board members have that in front of me?
It's in the fact of.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
It's a roll call.
It can be a roll call. I had to set up a roll call here, Mr.
Mr. Frey.
Aye.
Mr. Lewinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
And I also.
Thank you.
Need a quarterly update? Resident engineer, Mr. Nesbit.
Thank you, Chairman Welch, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to come today and give the quarterly update on DDA activities. If you have a copy of a quarterly report, you can use it.
The quarterly report is later in the Agenda of the Information Section, if anyone has to provide that.
We currently have four rural rustic projects on our six-year plan, secondary six-year plan, which will be updated here in the next few weeks. But probably Turkey Ridge Road is open to construction later this year, and activities could actually start before the end of the year. And that project, about completed this year, but could actually start construction before the end of the year. There are other various district-wide guardrails and different types of projects that are also underway. The bridge project on 211 is coming close to being completed. Completion date is May 1st, which is a month away, and no significant reason why they will not be completed. We have a couple of resurfacing paving projects that are out. A surface treatment project has been advertised and awarded, and a planting project has been out. I sent Mr. Curry the list of our projects in the map, and I didn't bring it with me today, but it is, it intervenes, and I'd be happy to answer his questions.
Surface treatment is supposed to be happening today and tomorrow on Rock Mill's Road.
And there is a website that's on this thing, that you can go and check on projects on specific roads. Just go and zoom in, and you can get to Rappahannock County, and you can see what the status of those projects are. Bid the new road, the request for three-track restriction is still under review. We will be putting out, we will be holding a, I guess, a public interest period starting April 18th through May 18th, where we'll have signs on each end of the road, and we'll ask for input comments from the public. We'll be receiving those comments for a certain days, and before our sign's up, and take those comments in. And it's taking a little longer than usual, they're looking at revamping the process, so... But this moving, and hopefully we'll get some conclusion here, not too distant. The, we have a couple of our safety and operational improvement projects are still out there. I entered the lining of the intersection there, 231 and 522. And also, we have drainage issue that's kind of light on, where Ryan's Road intersects Route 211. That will involve a, replacing the pipe under 211, and so we're looking at possibly utilization for that project. Also, appreciate everyone's patience this year, as the rain has been an extraordinary rainy season, causing a lot of problems on the gravelways, and getting to them as best we can, and appreciated by the patience to try to get to them. Couple of special things I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of, is April 8 through 12th is National Work Zone Awareness Week. That's a national recognition of our, of the problems that are in our work zones, where people drive by through our work zones, and that's a very dangerous situation, just to recognize that and highlight it. And so if you see a work zone anytime during the year, especially that week, just be careful as you go through our work zones, that there are people that, you know, just like us, working in those zones, that have families and children, and they want to get home safely. Also, in August, has everybody seen the sign on Route 211, telling us that Northbound 29 is going to close, August, or see July 8 through August 2nd? And basically, we're going to, as you approach Vinhill Road, which is Route 215, is a series of pumps that have always been causing problems over the past many years, and we finally were able to arrange a budget to get those pumps lowered, and so we're going to be leveling out that approach. After several, you know, we've looked at several different options and alternatives for doing that work, and the quickest and easiest and most cost-effective way was just to shut that Northbound lane down and get it done. So we're doing, we're advertising it, we want everybody to avoid that area at all costs during that timeframe. The official detour is Route 17 up to 66, to points east and north from that area. And that's, we're going to do everything we can to get as many people as possible to use that route and not Route 20, not the local routes around Lawrence, and that we're not really capable of handling all that additional traffic. So we'll be ramping up our communication on that, and hopefully we'll be successful. Also, Mr. Nesbit asked me to highlight the contact information. If you have an issue, and I'll start putting that, I'll put that on our monthly report as, yeah, every month. There's a number of the call, if you have a pothole, if you have a routine issue, instead of, you can always, there's a number, it's called 800, 1-800-4-RIDE, which is 800-367-7623. And that gets you to our call center, and that puts it into our system, and it's in there, and, you know, we get that every day, we get an updated, update on our work requests, and we get that, and we're getting in our system and get it done. So that would be a, you know, kind of an easy way of recording routine things, that if you have a, certainly if there's a safety issue, you can report it in through, you know, through Sheriff's Office, or through some other means, you can contact one of your board members, or they've got my contact information, we can get to it pretty quickly. But it's just a routine matter, you can complete, get through that method as well. With that, I know we have our secondary six-year plan coming up later in this, later in this session, so with that, other than the quarterly questions that the board members may have?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Mark, for your information, and I'm sure you may be aware, we had another very, very bad accident on 211. I believe it was at Old Hollow Road, I think it was on Wednesday, or it was a three-car...
Rock Mills.
Rock Mills? Okay, at Rock Mills and 211. Thank you. That was a three-car accident. We don't get many three-car accidents around Rappahannock County. We keep having these incidents, whether it's at 6.6 Tiger Valley, or up there at Richmond Road slash Benvenue, and now Rock Mills, of what must be people having problems understanding they need to stop, or they need to yield, or maybe it's a function of limit lines. I know on 6.6, you put on stop lines on the median, that wasn't appropriate for Benvenue, but I just want to bring it to your attention, so that VDOT is constantly, you know, consistently diligent in looking at ways that we can, you know, I mean, every traffic calming measure you have, that's the right way to say it. Now we're getting into the warm weather, make these intersections as safe as possible, because we're still having some pretty tough accidents out there.
Right. And I did get word with that one, the communication I got, that was at Almond Mountain Interception?
That was a different one that day.
There you go.
We had seven that day.
Yeah, that was a bad, we had to close down 211 for a brief period of time, concrete truck turned over up on top of the mountain. But, yeah, we do, but...
I get it, you know, you can't, you're never going to get rid of it all, and possibly have zero defect mortality, but, you know, we just keep having these tough ones at these crossover points on 211.
Coming down a mountainside, it's not a road, it's a driveway, it's a parking lot. And that's, we've had four or five like this.
Mr. Grove is with the rest of the fire, well, Fire Rescue of Storyville.
Okay. Well, I'll reach out to you and, you know, discuss those locations that you feel are happening.
That's none of the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask one question of the board, and as Mr. Nesbit noted, we do have the new business agenda to do the six-year secondary preliminary discussion under, later in the meeting. I didn't know that you wanted to hold them for that. I've worked with them fairly closely, all VDOT staff locally, providing information for you. I suppose you could reorder your agenda to do that now, or you could let them know whether you want them to stick around a little bit.
So this later will be in this afternoon session?
It's in this afternoon.
Yeah, why don't we just go to now?
It's K1.
That's okay with the rest of the board. Mr. Nesbit's, I've got a lot on this plate, I've got all the bitches to clean out.
Do you need a motion to amend the agenda, or?
Yes.
I like a motion to be amended again, it's a move to the public hearing on...
It's not a public hearing, okay.
So we'll have a discussion on, where's?
Take A.
Would K1 appear at present time? Secondary six-year plan preliminary session.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded.
Move it to F2.
All of you in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. So I'll provide an introduction, and then board members certainly ask, let me know if you have any questions, and then we can work with the energy here as well. As you're aware, each year, you work through the six-year, secondary six-year plan. Boards of supervisors are empowered to allocate funding for secondary roads, primary roads are left to VDOT and communal transportation. Last year this time, the board reviewed secondary roads in need of hard surfacing, and came through to a priority list, which is included in the agenda pack in the under screen. And we'll be back up and say that the six-year plan is a six-year plan. So each year, you advance in time that last year in the six-year plan needs to be, funds need to be allocated for that last year, and occasionally, the project holding the last priority position in your plan is so-called hanging off the end of the plan for funding needs, and there's no room left for another road. That's the situation you find yourself in this year if you keep the roads the same. So that's a priority list, is Turkey Ridge Road, which Mr. Nesbit mentioned, they're getting started out there with preliminary work, and next month, I think, we'll come to the board with Rural Rustic Resolution to have that one taken care of, so they can move forward. Then South Pose Road, and then, not the full northern end, but to the northern end, 1.28 mile section. And then last year, you had Kaiser Run Road, actually two sections, because the middle part is already paved from, I think, a previous erosion effort, maintenance effort. And then the last road is Battle Run Road, which was further up the list, but was pushed down last year after your public hearing and input from the community. So to that extent, if those roads stay on the list, your funds available, predicted to be available over the next six years, are fully allocated. And it's more or less a functioning process to go through the public hearing, hear from the community that these roads still are appropriate, and then allocate funds for those six years. However, if one of these roads were to be removed from the list, then there would be room for another road to be added. If the board is of mind to do that, there are two potential roads that, working with VDOT, we have identified that may be appropriate to add, and if board members have other roads they think should be considered, we can work with VDOT over between now and the May meeting to develop information for those. Those two roads for potential consideration are Pullman's Fluff Road, which runs between Gid Brown and Kaiser Run, and Turkey Ridge Road, the other end from where the project is now. Culpeper has in their plan, O'Bannon's Mill Road, which runs from 211 over to the county line, and then Turkey Ridge coming from there inside Rappahannock County. So...
522.
Oh, 522, sorry, yes, wrong title. So this, this could be a project on Turkey Ridge within Rappahannock County, and actually, there are two sections of road on Turkey Ridge that could be projects in the future, broken up into 0.8 mile sections. You can see the cost projections there, $560,000 per segment. We discussed last year that VDOT prefers to break these projects into segments that are under $600,000, so they can be done with local forces, find that to be most efficient, cost-efficient. So I think with that, I've talked too much, and we'll answer any questions, and VDOT is able to answer questions as well.
So I have a question. This Battle Run Road, there's been at least two residents there that want to remove that completely from the, is it your point?
There are a number, I've received written communication and passed that along to the board, there are a number of residents on that road who requested it to be removed from the plan, and basically said that it's a prescriptive right-of-way, and they own the land under the road, and they don't agree to it being hard-surfacing.
So what is VDOT's position on that? Is that a problem, or just remove that altogether?
No, it's the county, it's the board's prerogative to prioritize, to put the road on here, that big to minimum qualification, I see that from a physical aspect, but prioritizing roads and getting public input, that would be the board's...
The roads towards the end of the list haven't seen any public investment yet in design, so it's not like work was done that would be abandoned. Now, for example, Turkey Ridge, I'm sure the design is done for the 0.4 mile section on Northern Stand, and so if the board wanted to pull that off, it'd be wasting those dollars that were already dedicated to that project.
But, you know, we could easily pull off the Battle Run Road and use that money for something else.
Would there be a hearing?
There will be a hearing at the next meeting, a public hearing, it's required, and it's a joint public hearing, VDOT and...
That's right, you can use that road, don't you?
You bet.
So ultimately, what I need from the board today is indication of what we should be advertising to the community, so that they're aware of what the public hearing would be about. The public hearing ad is pretty simple and generic, that we will have a six-year secondary plan, but we want to have, if there's a thought that Battle Run may be removed from the plan, then we want to make sure the public's aware of that, so they can come and speak to it. If there's a thought to keep it, then we want the public to be aware of that, so they can come and speak to it, so you can make the most informed decision you can.
Just out of curiosity, the NCS member five, or the last on the six-year plan, what would be the timeframe when that, everything stays the same, what would be the timeframe on getting that worked on?
I believe that's towards the end of the period, so it'd be, what, '23, '24? Yeah, I think, yeah.
Do you read signatures? Thank you.
So a letter to the board that Mr. Curry referenced, dated March 26th, is signed by nine households along Battle Run Road, asking that it be removed. And we heard loud and clear from them last year, when that project got slid from, I think, the middle of the list down to the bottom of the list. So they've been pretty vocal and pretty insistent that this board either move this thing down the list, or remove it entirely, so I'm inclined to, when we move this to the public hearing, have a conversation. to the public hearing, have a conversation as to whether or not it does affect me staying on the line.
And one option that I didn't say, but I did write in the packet, you could remove it from the list and not add a road. Because it's that far down on your list, you can essentially park those funds and have them available to aggregate with the next-year funds and replace a road in the next year this time, if you weren't ready and didn't have enough information on which road should be added to the plan.
So do you have a motion, are you taking the action?
So all I would like is a motion to authorize me to advertise for the public hearing next month. If you would like me to modify the verbiage to specifically speak to Battle Run, I could do that, I don't think it's necessary, the companion information in the packet would do that.
So Ron made the motion, I'll second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed in name. Motion here.
Thank you, I'm in, but VDOT appreciates you moving that in.
Very much so, thank you.
Yeah, now get back to work.
It's your state for your own personal entertainment, Mr. Curry.
Brings you to your treasurer's report. Treasurer's reports aren't included in the packet in the same format they are each month. To speak to the cash balance chart again, you can see the FY '19 cash balance is very similar to what it was in '18, and that is after having a number of pretty large expenditures in this, this month, as you'll see when we go through the AP, several quarterly payments, quarterly payments to the fire rescue association and to the fire companies, and BML, some other costs, as well as the $135,000 approximately for the first portion of the public safety radios that were received. So that speaks well, so your cash is still in good position. Regarding revenue, we continue to see strong revenue receipts, your general property revenue is at 99.52% of budget, which is very positive. There is more delinquent tax revenue received than expected, and that has a lot to do with Ms. Nick advertising and using an outside firm to go after this delinquent revenue. We haven't seen a lot of revenue from the end of that process, but seems to be when you go through that process, other people pay, and the payer fills on time. From an expenditure standpoint, things are tracking pretty well. The theory is that you may see some outliers, or in many cases related to areas that the board has already allocated, reserve funds from contingency, we just haven't transferred them yet, and that's just some of the sublines. Overall, the departments are in pretty good shape, and if they remain in good shape and are going into the year in net positive territory, we will not transfer those funds from BOs contingency, those BOs contingency funds will just fall back to the fund balance and be available to be used next year. I don't happen to answer any questions to this board member's head.
Is that, just to account for spend?
Make time in the accounts payable?
The accounts payable does include a payment to Walker Jones, and I'll pass this down. I believe it's about $400, I'll have to provide more detail, but given that there is a payment for Walker Jones, it would be appropriate for board members to recognize that the name of personal interest, and I've prepared this statement as I have in the past.
That's just a proper here?
Yes.
So I'll go ahead and pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that included consideration of payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual or a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I'm a, that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process and BOs contingency allocation process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones and/or Offutt Kerman, which firms may provide legal counsel related to Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that one or more of the named firms are providing for my legal defense as a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Mr. Curry, is there a bill for Offutt Kerman in the accounts payable?
There is not.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h Hotel, as a board supervisor's member, I, John Zinski, may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that include consideration of payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and/or a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a board supervisor's member, I, Ronald Frejier, may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that include consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm may be providing for my legal defense as an individual and/or a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board of supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115.h, as a board supervisor's member, I may have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that included consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg One case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual or as a member of the board of supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors, which are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
And so let me clarify now, the Walker Jones payment is for $479, there's also the monthly $300 payment for the, for the board's commission accounts. As I noted just a minute ago, there's several payments in the April 1 check run that are not a typical payment, a total of $209,976 to your fire rescue companies and associations, the $134,491 for public safety radios, just over $30,000 for a sheriff vehicle that was included in the budget, $28,735, which is a quarterly payment to the health department, those together come to $403,269, out of the $648,266.64, that's why that number is so large this month. So add it to the April 1 accounts payable check run for the $648,266.64, our two check runs on March 15th, one is for $35,171.26, and the other is for $200. The reason for the $200 is there was a input error for one of the checks, it was supposed to be $265, and it was entered as $65, so we had to cut a second check to make that count out. Welcome any other questions, motion to approve all of those check runs.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question or two on that.
Go ahead.
The $479 invoice from Walker Jones, we itemized, breakdown of that is, it covers work-related events from February 22nd through March 19th. On February 22nd, which just happens to be the same day that the subpoena to me and Mr. Glennie was issued, it says, "Letter to C. Compton, service copies, favorite subpoena, letter to C. Compton, service copies, Glennie affidavit, letters to clients with copies of correspondence subpoenas, letter to clerk of court, service fees, copies of subpoenas, letter to decomet copies of subpoenas, discovery conference, email communicate, communication, I'm sorry, between attorney and decomet." Then again, as I stated, it has other dates, 3, 4, 3, 5, 3, 7, through 3, 19. And my question is, especially from the earlier conversation we had right after public comment, I received a letter from Mr. Brown on Friday, and I believe that that letter was dated maybe on March 29th, I'm sorry, and Ms. Smith said that she received nothing. Exactly who received something when the county board of supervisors is, is sent something as a client?
Are you asking me?
I'm just asking a question.
I don't really answer.
Anybody can answer it, that knows the answer, but that the board supervisors as a defendant has, has a respondent in the Bragg One case, who did you send communication to, Mr. Brown?
Generally, I've sent it to the entire membership of the board, if it involved an action regarding the board, or an action that was, you know, not germane just to the individual defendants, I would say it's the entire board.
Well, like I said, excuse me, like I said, the first thing I ever received from you in the mail, or from Mr. Brown, since he was being hired back in August, was the envelope with no cover letter explaining what it was I was receiving, and I got that on Friday, the 29th.
Okay, you'll have to ask Mike Brown about the details of that, that was something he did, and I didn't have anything to do with it.
He doesn't work for you? I thought you said the last time we had these discussions that he serves under your direction.
We generally do confer on the larger, the larger issues, and I'll do some things and he'll do other things, but as far as that level of minutiae, he didn't talk to me about who he sent it to.
Well, I'm just trying to understand the process, if the board is a respondent, shouldn't somebody receive something?
Yeah, generally, yeah, yeah. If the board's.
But we don't, generally, we don't, that's the problem.
I don't know how much has gone out, I don't know what's gone out from, from Mike Brown, if that's what you're asking, or specifically who he sent these things to, that he brought up just now, I have no idea who was on the list at what date or any of that kind of thing, that's just not something I usually get along with.
So you're saying you don't know what he's up to?
Oh, I do, just kind of that level of detail.
Well, that's the kind of level of detail that I think I'd like to know something about, and that's why I'm asking the question.
I'll pass that one.
As members of board supervisors, we're a respondent, we're involved in this mess, I would like to get more information, I would like to get it privately, man.
I feel the same way, and I've had this conversation in a meeting with Mr. Brown present, and I've had this conversation with him privately as well, you know, that, and I would say it again, and again, and again, the problem that creates so much ill will is that not everyone gets the same information at the same time.
Well, I'll discuss that.
And this is a perfect example of that happening.
That's a fair point, I'll discuss it with you.
As a follow-up on that, how do you get direction from the board as one of the respondents?
Now, that question, I didn't quite understand the last part, what did you say?
Since the board is one of the named respondents in that lawsuit, how do you get direction from the board?
Well, if the board were to take a vote, then I would get direction from there, otherwise, the day-to-day grind of litigation is generally something that's just solely relegated to the, to the job of the attorney. That's, the attorneys will do what's reasonably necessary in defense of the client. It's only on certain, much larger issues that I would feel that we would need to come back to the board to discuss it and get a vote on something. So far, what we're dealing with here is the minutia of.
The July meeting, it was the, the July meeting of this board was the last time this board had any involvement in that case, and that voted majority to instruct you to seek terms of settlement.
Which, which I did.
But we haven't seen that.
Well, he, he never answered me. I'm, I asked him for, now his objective, he won't even tell us the attorney's fees amount in the interrogatory that we asked, so he just won't tell me how much it is that he's asking for, so we would know what to tell him as far as the answer of whether he wants to sell. I mean, how can we sell the case unless we know what they're claiming? So, and he just refuses to answer that question, Mr. Frejier. So I can't come back here and say, hey, this is what they're asking for unless we know, unless they tell us.
Right.
And so far, that hasn't happened, despite, I've noticed Brown has asked him several times, hey, tell us what is it you're asking for?
Well, okay, if we could, maybe, maybe I got it down, I have to tell that we need to talk to, I mean, work on later on in the Exandria, some of the field topics, but I, I just wondered if he's got a bill here, and it says, "Letter to clients," and this is the first time on Friday, I got a client which is over a month from the time that he's living here, so he sent somebody something on the 22nd when he sent out my subpoena. And I cannot fathom why any intelligent person with subpoena, a member of this board, that's one question, which will be discussed later, and I could possibly fathom why as far as a citizen with this subpoena.
Well, there's easy answers to those questions, but you want it now or later?
Well, I'll give you time to think on it, later's what I'm about to discuss.
I can answer right now. With regard to Mr. Glennie, his name was mentioned in this Bragg's interrogatory answers, and emails were provided from him as part of her discovery response. So it would be due diligence on the part of any lawyer who's defending the board, and certainly the individual members, to find out what, if any, other evidence there may be there. Second, with regard to yourself, obviously, you know, you filed the acknowledgement, and we want to see what other correspondence there may be regarding that or any other facts, notes, you know.
Well, I say, I can almost understand it, but it doesn't, this doesn't make any intelligence sense to even ask those kind of questions, because like Mr. Glennie pointed out, it's 2.2-3713d, states that the public body bears the burden of proof, and there's no way with any individual, whether it's me or an individual citizen, can provide this board with the necessary information to fulfill that responsibility?
Okay. You know, I, I think that the board and the individual members have an excellent defense, and it's, it's our job as the attorneys for those two, for the individuals.
But you haven't provided that.
Haven't provided what?
The defense.
Well, you know, that's something that we're going to do a trial.
But you haven't went to trial. You had two and a half years, this is not the right place to do this, but you've had two and a half years to do that, you were failed to do that.
No, I haven't failed to do that.
You have.
Chairman, if this is not the right place to do this, is that?
I don't control.
Well, I, that's why I, I said that, but Mr. Brown wants to continue with it.
I gave you the answer. That's my answer.
I have a motion on the, on the table.
For what?
I made, I made a motion to pay the accounts payable.
No, but there's a question here with this invoice, and I think that we need to find out if this actually happened. It's not a very big invoice, it's not gonna, I think that this invoice needs to be pulled until this is explained to us. Did these things happen that we're being billed for? Because y'all said you didn't get it, and I know that Ms. Smith and I didn't get it, until, I got something last week, right? So can we? So can we pull this one invoice from Walker Jones until we have time to discuss it with Mr. Brown?
I don't really think that's necessarily, I don't think that-
I think that would be objective, sir. I think that would be objective. It's not much money, but it's a very, it's a good point that, you know, things may not be happening that we're getting billed for, and we need to find out if that's, if that's actually been happening. If he's sending this stuff out, there may be a supposed office, I don't know, but he's billing us for something that happened over a month ago, and y'all said earlier you didn't get it.
Well, Mr. Ossensky's made a motion to pay the bills, I'll second that motion.
Why, why can't we get along with somebody?
Good question.
Well, I just asked you to pull out a four hundred seventy-nine dollar invoice because I have questions with it, and normally, normally the board-
I'm not trying to insult Mike Brown to that effect, he's a reputable attorney in the community.
That's not an insult.
I think it is.
It's not an insult to him, I mean, you just said that you-
I have a motion, and I have a second. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Aye. Let's move on.
I thought we were going to be objective.
Thanks, I'm on your agenda, is the standing item for the board supervisors contingency budget reservation process. Received communication from the treasurer, we worked with her beforehand, and we may see some more to this end. Microsoft has announced that their support for Windows two thousand and seven, eight, will be ending, so many of the computers that are in use around the county haven't been updated very recently, are running that OS, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to try and put the latest OS on a very old computer because of the cost. So she found funding in her department to cover part of the cost, and may find all of it by the time the end of the fiscal year comes around, but she's requesting that the board reserve five thousand forty-eight dollars now to support the expense, and if you recall during our FY twenty budget discussions, I noted several instances where it was my interest to accelerate some of these sort of expenses to FY nineteen rather than including them in the FY twenty budget. This is maybe the first of it. I think what I would do in the coming months or months is try to package several of them together and weigh them against one of the budgets that we know is going to come well under and do a transfer that way rather than do the contingency, but I haven't worked that out yet. At any rate, if the board is okay with this reservation for the treasurer's office computers, I'd ask for a motion to, to identify that.
A question, I, I place a form of a motion for discussion. I'll second. I know that we've discussed this once before, but will this cover enough money to make sure that there is a proper number or size of UPSs?
We don't know if she included that, but I have expressed that I think that is important to all of these end users. It's not in this, in this quote, presumably, they already have them in that office, and they'll just keep using the same ones. I know that we covered last month the fact that larger UPS for a server for, I believe, the Stonewall system, presumably, are-
I knew that we, you and I had a session after the member was here, or if it was there, whatever, session or whatever, I just wanted to bring that point back, thank you.
I have a motion, I second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Yes, there's one supplemental appropriation on the agenda for this meeting, and that is from the sheriff. The school system actually purchased some of the AEDs that the sheriff purchased recently, and that you authorized the purchasing action at the last meeting, and had a supplemental appropriation for the grant funding to cover most of that expense, so three thousand dollars passing from the schools over to the sheriffs to pay for their share of some of these AEDs to be approved.
AEDs of device?
Automatic external difficulty.
It's the thing you want around when you're having a-
Do we have one up here? One downstairs.
Okay.
Might be too far away.
So it's a pass-through?
It's a pass-through thing, yes. Is there any motion for that? Yes.
What's that written like about?
I will make a motion, all votes in favor say aye.
I will note that on the form, I changed it a little bit to make it clear when these items are, have revenue associated with them as opposed to just using your general fund amounts, just to make it clear that it is a more of a pass-through. That brings us to appointments. We still have a vacancy on the agricultural and forestal districts advisory committee for any landowner, so, where any landowners out there that want to be on this committee who aren't already, please let us know, let your supervisor know. We, it appears there will be three districts coming up this summer, I've discussed that within the summers, who's getting things set up, ready to go for the advertisements that will happen for the advisory committee, the planning commission, and the board of supervisors in a methodical process. First step is the letters out to all the landowners that are in the district to make sure they still want to be in the district. This is their opportunity to add in or give them. The next up is the library board vacancy, and as you recall, last month, we discussed this, and it's a vacancy for the Jackson district, which has no representation right now. The board suggested this for Frager.
I can have somebody do that, but I, I sent her the link to download the form, but-
Haven't received it yet.
I can put that on the list for the day, but not one of the usual participants, but she seemed very interested and excited about doing that. So I can make that happen by the next meeting.
And I suppose you have options at work sessions or public hearings coming up, but do you really want to be an honor?
I can understand, I'll handle that.
Do we know if the, and I'm all for finding someone in the Jackson issue.
Oh, yeah.
We've got this vacancy, and it sounds like the library's got some things that are coming up, you know, they need attention. We have some standing applications from the previous round.
Have they run from Jackson?
Right, right. We can't find anyone, it sounds like we will.
We'll do the best we can.
Okay. I didn't know if it made any sense to, if that's the case, we'll, we'll stay out of that, pass it out.
Thank you. Next, just a reminder that the planning commission member for the Stonewall Hawk or voting district will be expiring in July, so I want to make sure the board is clear of that schedule, and let me know any process you want me to go through to help provide for continuity. I don't know if this individual is interested in continuing to serve, that's, I guess Mr. Parrish could find that out, but if you need me to advertise anything anytime, I mean, no matter.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, both board members, but I think when we have these vacancies, we've always talked about advertising in case other citizens were interested.
Yeah, we don't have a policy to that end, perhaps we could or should, but I think the board talked about a policy towards the end of Ms. Kaiser's term, and that's one of those things that didn't get finalized, so just let me know what you want to do.
What's your deadline for, I mean, for July, right?
Right, I think, as I noted, the board can make an appointment at your July meeting and not have a break in, in service, but you'd obviously want to back that up for advertising, and you can make an appointment anytime for that next term, you could do it today, quite frankly. So if you advertised early, you could make an appointment for, after the term ends, but I don't, it'd be a little awkward if you have one person serving and another person waiting in the wing, lined up a couple of minutes.
How much advance notice do we need to advertise?
Well, we want to advertise two weeks in a row like we did for the library, at least a month ahead, and just saying.
Can we make a decision at our May board meeting, it's still taking up time?
Yes. Just want to make sure people are paying attention, so that coming in. The next item is regarding the public safety committee, the citizen representative. The public safety committee citizen representative has been unable to attend any meetings while I've been here in the county, and I understand for several meetings before that. So coming out of the last public safety committee meeting, Ms. Smith asked for me to have this item on the agenda so the board could discuss that and determine whether a different representative would be appropriate, and I'll leave it to Ms. Smith, Mr. Frager for that.
Well, I don't, I don't have an update on this. I would have, be able to have something further at some meeting. We don't meet again until Liam's name.
And similarly, if, if that involves advertising, we just need to, it's a lead time also, like. Who brings us to our committee updates? Committee, please.
First one, county building.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't meet this past month, we had really a short agenda, we had, and it was the review of the initial response from the engineering architectural firm about the building study, the space, spacing study, and we didn't really, didn't have much to push, so we basically gave Mr. Curry a little bit of time off so he could work on the budget.
Thank you.
All right.
Plan on meeting this month?
Broadband committee.
Mr. Chairman, the broadband committee did not meet this month, however, one of our committee members, Margaret Bond, who is with us here this afternoon, was at the planning commission meeting, and spoke, and spoke to what the broadband committee had provided to them with respect to input edits and additions to the comprehensive plan. And I think board members saw that on their agenda last month. Obviously, nothing's happened with respect to public hearing or the comprehensive plan, so that, that is still sitting there. We did, Mr. Curry and I did have some interaction with Virginia Tech, they reached out to us with respect to, I think it's graduate program, that graduate class that was working on rural broadband, and we participated in a, like I said, a webinar, a West Con, a SCAT conference, to give them input on Rapid Hand County, and Curry, maybe I'll just let you-
Right, so the master's level course at Virginia Tech, apparently some months ago, they were looking for a community to use for study purposes for the class, they selected Rapid Hand County, we didn't, we weren't aware, they reached out to us to let us know that they had a design competition for their, their students, and asked if we would participate in a video conference to answer some questions, and then this past Saturday, when we were looking at Glennes and the Sky, they were actually having the design contest, and they provided some presentations that we haven't had a chance to review yet. It is a college-level work, so it's not a paid product, but some interesting insight from people outside the community with some ideas on how to improve our broadband and telephone communications, so we'll take the benefit that we can get out of it, and I guess be flattered some of the people at Virginia Tech were paying attention to how to do cell phone and broadband here.
We'll, we'll push this to board members so that they have the, I think some of them are about a ten, twelve slide PowerPoint presentation, and we'll push it to the broadband committee as well, so that the committee has that too. Perhaps, perhaps there will be a reason to meet between now and the next meeting, even though there may not be any motion on the comprehensive plan, just to discuss updates and talk about any new actions that might be happening in the county by the providers that we already have.
Yeah, I haven't had time to read the article in depth and do any follow-up, but somebody sent me an article, it was in the paper, it said, "Jeff should receive a million-dollar grant for broadband expansion."
Was that a VTI grant?
I don't remember, I'll, I'll check that.
That's great, thank you.
There's not much I can do, as I'm trying to get out the door, and lucky that it's pretty much costing.
Anyways.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Number two, four and five are skipped, man. Number three, recreational facilities.
Funds in recreational facilities, authority update. I was not able to attend this past meeting, but I understand that there was a very robust discussion of plant giving by my binder, and that there is also a scheduled work day for the Saturday at the park, and then the following weekend, or April thirteenth, of course, is the fodder stack race. So those have been the major activities of our C R F A for the last week.
And your answer, number four was removed, five is still on the agenda.
Five, we didn't meet this, this past month. We, we have work to do, but we didn't do it through several budget meetings, as well as we didn't do any more work on six, the rules committee has to finalize that proposal for the, I didn't see that, the resolution. We have that, I think, next month, we'll do it.
And then next would be finance committee.
That's, and tack onto the tail end, so the rules committee is going to speak to the finance committee resolution.
Right, maybe we didn't have a chance to finalize the, the resolution.
That brings us to the review of legal mayor's item, which is an update on schedule, et cetera. I provided in the agenda item update that I received from Mr. Goff, as well as from Mr. Mitchell, from Mr. Goff for Braden, and Mr. Mitchell for the other three. I can't really answer very many questions, but I can record that in the past month, Mr. Mitchell will be able to.
I think that covered the information that I wanted to cover, what were the other parts?
I'd like to double the fire rescue EMS services.
If you recall at the last meeting, board authorized me to work with the association of companies to amend the fire rescue EMS services agreement to reflect the changes that were requested by the association that were provided to in draft form at the last meeting. I took those changes, incorporated them into what was the previous adopted version, version nine A, called it nine B, shared it with Mr. Beva, and he shared it with the association at a meeting and confirmed that the wording, while slightly different than what was proposed, is, meets the same end, perhaps a little more cleanerly, and he is now in the process of seeking signatures from all of the companies in the association. Did also have Mr. Goff review it before I sent it back out to the fire companies, et cetera, confirmed it could be, it could be approved as to form. So the board has an option here, that is, we can wait for those companies in the association to sign the document, or if you want, you could pass the resolution today authorizing the chair and I to execute this agreement upon signature by all the rest of the executing parties, and I'll leave that to your discretion. Happy to answer any questions.
Which route, in your opinion, best facilitates the process?
If you're okay with the documents that are presented online, you don't have to hear about it again if you authorize a patent, which is my perspective. But if there was any question as to the language, then, you know.
Well, I'll make a motion, we can go ahead and do that.
So the, the resolution is included, and I want it to be cleared, and it very simply identifies that the agreement provided is the agreement, and that the chairman and board of supervisors of the county and- of the county minister being here are authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the county after the county attorney signs it approved as deformed and after all of their executing parties sign the amended agreement.
Okay.
Second. This is a roll through?
Yes, sir.
Motion made, second, Mr. Curry.
I don't know.
That's who was asked.
I.
Ms. Smith.
I.
All right, enough getting all these signatures without having to schedule another meeting just to get us this time.
The next item on the agenda is regarding the country of origin labeling that we discussed at the last meeting. At the last meeting, you asked me to prepare a letter for your consideration. Since that time, I did develop a draft letter and I reached out to Mr. Thornhill. He was going to do a little research and get back to me. I've not heard back yet, so I think the time sensitivity is not critical here, so it'd be my recommendation to push this over to the next meeting. And by then, I should be able to have that letter finalized for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for following up with me as well.
This is a follow-up to discussion we had at the last meeting, which you authorized funding and purchasing for a few items related to the public safety radios. That process is moving forward. One of those items that we talked about was the $1,680 expense to have Motorola review our existing portables and to determine whether they can be used on the new era system. All indications are that they can be used on the new system, although not as efficiently as new radios. Radios we have are phase, P-25 Phase One compliant, and the new system operates in Phase One or Phase Two. In order to be 100% sure, Mr. Williams is going to be taking one of those radios, one or more of those radios, and actually programming it to work off of the new system, which is up and running in the Culpeper area right now, just to make sure 100% that they will work well. If that's the case, then we can plot a slower path to replacing those portables and seek grants rather than paying the whole amount. And I'll be able to let you know at your next meeting whether that worked out or not. In addition, there's been a lot of talk about backhaul, data backhaul from our three transmission sites here in the county, as well as our public safety center, back to the regional system. Been working for, seems like years, but I haven't been here that long, to try to get this lined up. I'm very close to pulling together an agreement with Comcast through which the capital cost could be recovered within a three or five year period and for about the amount that we are currently budgeting in the FY '20 draft budget. So, that's encouraging, that there shouldn't be a large capital expense. Remember, in talking to other providers, there maybe was going to have to be a large capital expense to get fiber brought to the Sperryville town. That's still coming together, some detailed agreements that I've passed over to Mr. Goff to look over and put a note in front of the other vendors to let them know that I'm getting close to recommending a deal. If they've got something to bring to the table, then time is of the essence. So, nothing for you to approve at this meeting, but there may be over the next few meetings, either there are work sessions or possibly a public hearing on the 22nd. If we want to be more timely on this, I'll get information to the board as quickly as I can. And that may be in the form of simply a purchasing authorization for the, for the service. Now, any questions? I have to answer any questions.
Could you repeat that again?
Yep. Next meeting.
Good deal.
All right. That brings us to an item I added to the agenda to discuss the FY '20 budget in case the board had any questions. In your last work session, you did ask questions regarding historical society. Mr. Toll's been patiently sitting here to answer those questions related to the $5,000 contribution to the historical society. If there are any other questions, I brought my materials and be happy to talk them over. Of course, you don't have to talk about the historical society either if you don't want to. He was not available to come on the April 4 meeting, which I asked him to be here today.
So, doing this for memory, but what we talked about was the, I think it was last year, the $4,000 for the Civil War signs or whatever.
Correct. It's a two-part, right? Historical Society and Civil War Trails.
That's right. Right. So, part of the monies for the Civil War Trail are part of the historical society budget?
Historical Society has requested $5,000, and Civil War Trails is requesting $200 per sign for 33 signs, which comes to $6,600. In the FY '19 and '18 budget, we're paying for only 20 signs, even though there are 33 signs. So, I forwarded those letters onto the board so you can review the documentation along with those requests. I was told I think you can speak to both of those programs.
I was wondering was there going to be approval of the 22 signs? Would that have created a problem? I mean, do they actually get around all the signs every year, or is it kind of staggering?
The difficulty is concerned about the long-term maintenance of these signs. This, this project originated in 2005, and it's been the prime mover through the entire thing. Actually, I didn't bring it. I have a spreadsheet. I have about 2,000 in-kind hours invested in this project. The 4,000 last year was just a number that seemed accepted up to the board, but didn't cover all the signs. The dilemma we get into is moving forward, how do we cover the maintenance, the additional signs? And they do where? I have a list now of ones that need to be replaced. My biggest concern is I'm not going to last forever and trying to get them placed. And I would say the request for this was came from Civil War Trails, not from me. I'm just a local base, which will be on about the signs. My big concern is that everything gets maintained going forward, because I think, I think it's been, it's really been a significant contribution to the local interest and tourism of the county by these things. I brought, some of you have this, I brought copies for everybody. This is the, this is brochure that I designed that basically is a summary of the, what the, what the trails markers are in the county.
So, I have a quick question relative to the $200 per sign. What mechanisms do we have to see that the maintenance is being done with those invested dollars?
Sort of be being on Civil War Trails, I guess.
So, similarly, how do we do that, Mr. Gruber?
Yeah, yes, yes. Please, I appreciate it as an effect, but, but we get other benefits as well. It is a eastern half, the program permeates the eastern half of the country. There are now thousands of these markers all over Georgia, Virginia, Tennessee, Kentucky, Pennsylvania. There are marketing benefits, and their brochures, which contain reference to our local markers, are distributed throughout the east. So, this, I must say, these, this brochure has been, actually, I'm the one that ordered these and distributed them. We're now, some of them get lost to weather and so forth, but they're now, we've heard 5,000 run printing of these things. So, somewhere over 10,000 of these have been, or around 10,000 have been picked up. And you see folks stopped and looking for things. We have them at the visitor's center, at the historical society, but also at some boxes you may have seen at some of the sites. Not all the sites have the, have these things in it. There's a lot of local interest, too. I teach a course over at U on basically Rapid Hand's involvement in the Civil War. I actually, a couple of my students are here today, and it's been, it's been, I think, I'll say wow, it's been very popular. It's been in town for a number of years and always has a large following. So, there's a lot of local interest. Anyhow, I mean, it's, but I say, my biggest concern about that one is that I'm not going to last forever, and I hope that it goes forward, because there's really a lot of useful history that's involved with those markers. I think it's been a helpful thing for the county. I don't know. I don't know if you have any other questions about that, but you also, I brought a, I don't know how much all of you know about what the historical society does, but as, I also brought something, it's kind of a joke in a way. It's like, history is so yesterday, so we have a lot of calendars from last year. Brought those as, this is one example of the kind of publications we do for and about the county. And on the back is listed a lot of key points about what the society is about. You know, if you haven't, if you haven't been there, this, this.
Thank you.
If you haven't been there, invite you to come by. We have a museum. Lots of publications, we do programs, we just had a nice program yesterday. Sorry. Just a couple of words about the society. What does it do? Because it collects, preserves, and disseminates the history of this place. So, it's all of our history. And to the extent we're able, we try to, try to collect what's going on now, because what happens today will inform the history later. It's, a lot of requests that we get are for pictures, like we're in that calendar, and including stuff, you know, ongoing businesses today will be the history of tomorrow, so we're trying to collect that when we can. The society is daily run by volunteers. My wife has been the executive director for the past 15 years. She's a volunteer. It won't go into the details of what's involved, but we have a building that we own, but we need to pay for it, and it's all the overhead that you'd imagine that goes along with something like that. And one, one meagerly paid assistant is the only paid staff. So, I mean, the notion of a historical society to us is something that endures in perpetuity. So, again, we're working on how to finance the place by itself in the long term, but we're not there yet. Therefore, the request in the, in the budget for some help, and it's really just ongoing overhead, right now is what it's, what is going on. So, any, any, any consideration you can give to that would certainly be appreciated. Happy to answer any questions here.
That is going to move this past K1 on to K2. K1 we moved up before. K2, we're requesting Ms. Smith to discuss fire rescue legal agreements.
This is only a spin in front of the Public Safety Committee, I guess, from the last two quarterly meetings, and our mutual aid agreements with our surrounding counties are expired and, I mean, related to that data, is that perhaps, do you have the copy for review still, Mr. Goff?
I can actually update that, that with Kevin yesterday. Mr. Williams received comments from Mr. Goff, and he's in the process of working with Madison to try to develop mutually agreement with Madison that may serve as a template for those communities that are not currently under agreement. So, he received the information back, he's from Mr. Goff, he's been back in touch with Madison. Madison staff have been working with their board, and it may be ready for consideration by the board at your next meeting.
So, the Madison agreement has been approved as form by us?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Now, that's not to say that it won't change before we see it again.
Wow.
Is it right?
Madison may have something to say about it.
Very good. I just want to make sure that that's moving forward. Thank you so much.
The next item is also one that Ms. Smith requested on the agenda regarding the Public Safety Committee scope. I attached to this agenda item the rules and procedure for the Public Safety Committee that Kevin and I found in our files. I have not been able to find any forming resolution for the committee, although it may be in a minute book, who knows when? The rules and procedure from 2010. So, it may be appropriate for the board to review your expectations for the Public Safety Committee and then possibly adopt a new resolution to state what those, what those may be, but I'll leave it to Ms. Smith.
Well, I'm summarizing that, Gary, I think you hit it very succinctly, which is, I mean, this attachment to the agenda basically says the purpose of the Public Safety Committee will be public safety, which is really not much of a definition, it's just an redundancy. And we sort of have a lot of different things come our way in the course of those meetings, and I sometimes wonder if they wouldn't be more productive if they were more targeted or if we knew exactly what our scope should be. And so, that's why I've added it to, asked this to be added to the agenda today for your review and any thoughts you have about exactly what direction the committee should take. So, I mean, I'm not attracting feedback necessarily today, but please bear in mind, you know, what might be the most helpful way for that committee to function. And I don't know, I know we had talked about this in our last Public Safety Committee meeting, and I forgot to mention it at the last board meeting. I wasn't sure if you had any additional thoughts, Mr. Fraser, and I will review the rules for procedure as well.
Yeah, the rules for procedure was kind of a, it's cumbersome.
They're very clunky.
So, we need a little bit of work, but we also need some direction. I mean, I think that we, as a group, we've done a few things that are helpful, you know, I think Ms. Smith, basically, spirit and tapping the, the phone system has been a bit close, but it seems to be behind us and we need to be focusing on other things.
One thing the board may consider doing is empower the Public Safety Committee to recommend what they think is the experts in the room, so to say, what, what role they can play in informing the board on public safety matters and what, do they have an idea of what that scope should be from their expert position? And you can see if it aligns with what you think it ought to be.
I think we can come back with that.
How's the sheriff's attendance been at the Public Safety Committee meetings?
Good.
Very?
Yeah.
And I think on the one occasion she wasn't there, someone intended to represent her. It was her first meeting, I think, here, last year.
I'll go back through my files when Mr. Ben and I were on the Public Safety Committee and see if there's anything there. Because I vaguely remember having some of the same concerns expressed, but I don't know if you really.
It probably is a historical.
Yeah. And I don't think any work was done on it, but I'll go back and look.
Appreciate it.
Much like the work that was done, she'll ask me to read, adopt the resolution for the rules committee, that same process could carry forward with the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Mr. Wazinski wanted to provide an update from the River Basin Commission meeting, the 10th. Which was this conflict, as you noted earlier in minutes, we're not getting into it's in the.
I'm sure everybody knew I went.
It was a real nice day, wasn't it?
It was. We went to Dominion Raceway too, it was a pretty fascinating place. It's a very interesting place to talk about healthy water shifts. This is one of, you know, you get presentations down there, and this was one I thought that board members should be aware of. It's been an ongoing effort here between the Department of Forestry and the Rapid Handic River Basin Commission. It's a three-phase effort, they're going into the beginning of the third phase. If you look at the last sentence in the first paragraph, that's entitled, "What is the project?" It began in April, well, of last year, and the scope was, scope, there it is again, "Was broadened to create the policy and financial infrastructure needed to facilitate forest and agricultural land conservation retention on landscapes on a long-term sustainable basis." Well, that's nice government speak, I guess. So what does that mean? If you look at number six on the flip side, the objective for Phase Three, they're using Essex County and Orange County as, I guess, test counties. They're both within our basin group. But they're addressing the scale and market convenience requirements needed on carbon values of existing forests as a possible proxy for water quality benefits. In other words, they're talking about carbon credits here, carbon values. And the more forest coverage you have in your county, the more you may, may be able to qualify for certain, I guess, purchase, I don't know, carbon credits from other jurisdictions.
It's a different model to monetize ways to keep the nature natural.
And your financial incentive to do so.
Right, rather than a financial incentive to subdivide and develop.
Right. So it's, it's, might be right in our wheelhouse, it's very early, very early in the process, but I just wanted the board to have the FAQ, frequently asked questions on this about the healthy water shifts in the TMB Elk Project. So that if this, if you start hearing about more of this in the future, you'll at least have this.
All right, and Mr. Wazinski provided there's a handout in place with this information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, there was, there's been discussion from the board wanting to have a resolution of appreciation for Sharon Dotson for her years of service. Staff pulled that together, the idea that it could be passed today and presented to Ms. Dotson at a future meeting during the presentations section, when we know she's available. We worked with former county staff and former commissioner of revenue to help us develop the resolution that's included. So I offered up for your consideration and asked if you're of mind to approve this, that you not leave here after this day's session without signing it, so that we can get it framed up.
I can make a motion to approve the resolution.
One second.
Motion made, second, although.
Given it's a resolution, it'd be appropriate that we're going.
Go, go, go. Okay. Mr. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Wazinski.
Aye.
And so.
Aye.
Barry.
Aye.
And I also, being the southern second cousin and all that.
Not sure what that means, but.
Well, her parents in my day were first cousins, so I told.
Is that also a murder?
No, no, that's not. It's south of Mason, Dixie, Florida.
Next item on the agenda is county magistrate.
What it looks like.
Just cover a couple items. One, looking through our expenses, it was very obvious that we need to do something about propane vendor and going through a process to change vendors to Holton from Corvus to now quote us based on the market rate plus a, basically a delivery fee. So our, our cost will float with the market, but it would be reasonable regardless. Second, staff is working on a household harmful waste collection event for the spring. Right now, tentative is that we'll do this at the co-op, which has been done in the past. We're working with several vendors right now to nail down who we'd like to go with. That will likely be based on a cooperative contract with another locality in the state. There are other firms we've talked to, seems like they all have contracts in place that we could write on if we want to. However, that'll have to come to the board because it will, it should be more than $10,000. So you'll be seeing that probably at the May meeting to approve.
What contract is that?
For household harmful waste, hazardous waste.
Thank you.
Rather than call it hazardous waste. Next, the, I wanted to let you know that the Flint Hill EMS Cost Recovery Agreement has, was executed, you authorized me to do that at the last meeting, so we got that done and got back to the group. I don't know that, if they've actually jumped on and started yet, I suspect they have. A brief update on the personnel policy that we talked about at the last meeting. I guess we agreed that the end of the fiscal year would be a good time to have that done. I reported to the board that VML recently updated their template for such document, and we jumped on that path, and Ms. May has provided to me already all the information she has compiled before, inserted and massaged into the VML template, so that's for me to review right now. So we should be well on our way to providing that document back to the board in the timeframe discussed. And lastly, I will say, you asked me to provide tower update before. Obviously, the Spiritville Tower is up, heard a lot of discussion about it, and happy to answer any questions the board may have. And then phone system, the other item that we've taken off the agenda, there are no issues in this past month except for a couple instances of wire on the ground from temporary repairs that were fixed this month. So I don't know if we've gone for a month without a single complaint. We did have the rather large issue late last week where a major link from the Washington CO was down, and so nobody could call anybody outside of six, seven, five. That was resolved by a central. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I guess my question on the tower is, it does not appear to me to be blue. Is that the final color now in place?
Yeah, it's, it's sky blue.
It looks sky white.
It looks very sky white.
The, the approval would allow Leeway to change the color of the tower without going back through public hearings the way it was approved. I have opened a discussion with CWS as to how that, how we would go about doing that. And so I'm waiting your back.
To include a cost estimate?
Correct. Or, well.
Well, whoever pays for it.
To be fair, we didn't take out a color chip.
We didn't take out a color chip, we just said sky blue, and they showed us some pictures of some other towers. Now, she, she hoped, did say that it will dull, you know, it's fresh paint, it's shiny. So it will go to a more flat, but it stands out with a green or black background without it now. And if you look at it from some of the other perspectives, it blends in pretty good.
It'll change it all when the leaves come out.
And do you think when the leaves, like the light green leaves come up, probably shortly, I think it will blend better? I just thought that one of the options was camouflaging inside when they reviewed.
Yeah, well, what it was, I've actually pulled the minutes, I have them here, it was this sky blue, although the color could be discussed further. I don't think they would agree that that means after they painted it and erected it, everything's up for discussion.
Well, how was the attendance at the balloon flights on Saturday?
It's apertorial.
Well, I mean, I was, I was at the one in Keever for a number of hours.
Yeah, I drove around mostly.
To spend much time in Stonewall Hawthorne.
I drove around mostly, the balloon was quite visible at Elden Farms. A large portion of what that tower structure would be, would be well above tree line and very visible from both approaches along 522 and other areas. The tower near Scrabble is pretty much not visible from 522 coming from Culpeper. Coming up Scrabble Road up behind the church, you can see it sticking out above the trees there. And coming from Woodville, there's a stretch of road, not very long, where you could see, you know, maybe a third of the tower sticking above the trees. That, that site is much more naturally camouflaged, the terrain and everything, than the Elden Farms, which, as I would say, is not camouflaged at all. So we don't know what CWS will do with this information, we've had some very preliminary conversations with them. And they'll have to decide based on, you know, seeing that in the field compared to just looking at 2D maps, whether they're interested in submitting application, they may decide to do that, or they may decide to take a different route.
And I don't know how long you were down there, Barry, not me, but you know, in the spot, but how was the traffic there at the Stonewall Hawthorne site?
It wasn't as, there wasn't as a, maybe localized, obvious place to be for that one as it was for Elden Farms. I actually happened to see Ms. McCreary when I drove up Scrabble, and she was talking to a citizen behind the church, so I stopped to talk to her. And I saw a couple cars on Jackson, but I didn't actually drive up to the tower site because it's, it's basically off. Looking at the tower from underneath, it doesn't do a lot good, you really need to see from a distance.
That location was more remote.
Right. So there wasn't the obvious congregation spot. So I didn't see more than two citizens that were at, up behind the church, and then I saw a couple cars down Jackson presumably stop for that reason. I saw some other people following me around, but I don't think they were following me.
I couldn't make it out of the way to the engagement.
I appreciate all the photographs you sent to us. Made us sense.
Yeah, and if, I intend, if we, if this tripulates and goes forward, I'll identify in the map where the photos were taken from and the direction of exposure and whatnot, but if it doesn't go anywhere, it's not worth the effort. So I thought at least give you those photos so you can see what I saw.
I kept thinking that one was just a speck on my screen, but I cleaned the screen and it was still a speck there.
Well, I tried to take as wide of a photo as I could to give you a sense of location of where it was, and then zoom in so you could see the speck wasn't a speck, and get you both, so that you could pull back out and get that. Budding photographer.
Yeah, but with those pictures, somebody could actually do a, a mock-up of what it may look like, sort of like an artist's rendering type thing.
Right. And CWS had, the person who was flying the balloons was out taking photos as well for those photo simulations later down the line. Any other questions on county administrator update? The next item is reports. Building permit report, zoning magistrate report, the PDOTs report, you heard from Mr. Mesgrove earlier. Happy to answer any questions on the other two reports if you have them, or at least take those questions back to the building official or the zoning administrator. If that brings us to a recess.
First item on the agenda is public hearing.
Sir, at the last meeting, the board authorized me to advertise a public hearing to amend Chapter One and Chapter Thirty of the Rapid Handic County Code to add the code of conduct and ethics. That is added to Chapter Thirty. Chapter One is amended to recognize that, that misdemeanors do not apply to Chapter Thirty dash five. I'm happy, be happy to talk through the changes in the ordinance further if the board would like. Otherwise, we can pursue to public hearing.
Mr. Curry, while I'll be detailed for a minute, the advertising that was done.
Yes. The advertising, advertisement is attached to the pack of material. Advertisement ran in the Rapid Handic News on March fourteenth and March twenty-first identifying the two code sections, two chapters that I mentioned, Chapter One and Chapter Thirty, would be modified to add code of ethics and conduct to the Rapid Handic County Code and clarify that violation of said code of ethics and conduct shall not be punished as misdemeanors. The full strike-through text has been available in my office since the advertisement ran, and is also attached to board docs.
Thanks, sir. And Mr. Curry, could you confirm that Rules Committee has looked at this over the course of a couple, few meetings, as well as the county attorney?
Yes, the Rules Committee reviewed this over several meetings. This is the output from the Rules Committee, it's their recommendation to the full board for consideration. The county attorney has been involved with each of those meetings and has reviewed this information prior to the last meeting, prior to the advertisement of public hearing.
Okay, I just, go to public comment.
Open the public hearing.
Anyone who wants to comment or speak, please raise your hand and recognize, take your name, the district, your comment, direct your comments to the board. All of the public here. Anyone have?
My name's Henry Golfine, I'm a resident of County District. I want to address the board about, I've been resident of Rapid Handic County by choice for forty-three years. And I have to say that, all by the way things are going in our local government, and I think they're counterproductive squabbles amongst members of the board, public squabbles. And it's, I, I don't understand why there are no sanctions. If you can have code of conduct, people don't adhere to it. It's like kissing your cousin on the ear, it's like, you know, White Loffer. The other thing I'd like to say is that these people are not here, is that I keep hearing continually about how much money these lawsuits are costing us and costing the taxpayer, and perhaps you should say it. And my message to you and to them is that they feel it is costing the county a lot of money, that I would suggest that they use the influence to have the plaintiff withdraw or complain, and deal with the plaintiff and her lawyer. I can understand if you're looking for good government and you bring up Freedom of Information Act, which was, what it was designed for, was designed that government would follow the rules and be transparent. But when it's used as a weapon, and that's what has happened here, this suit could be solved so easily if the board as a whole had been singled out. But to fire separate lawsuits against each member of the board who will not say, "I did something wrong," which they have every right to do, protecting the Constitution by that, is just wrong, it's vindictive. It's, it's trying to, it's trying to hurt people. It's trying to, it's trying to hurt people. It's punitive and it doesn't solve any problems. The problem should be solved if they want to with the lawsuit against the board, not against members. And perhaps this thing, if it were done that way to begin with, probably would have been solved a year ago, right now. So I'd like you to think about that. And I'd like people who are urging the suit, these suits to continue, to step back and say, well, I'm so worried about the money, maybe we should sue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Sheila Bressinger, Hampton District. I am technologically inept and stupid, so if I did not have a chance to see the board of the conflict of interest ethics that apparently is up, and I have my glasses, so I really can't read through the whole thing, I just want to make sure that this is something that has some teeth to it, that there are going to be consequences for bad behavior. This is why this whole thing came up in the first place, because there was an outcry of citizens who were unhappy with specific behaviors and actions of an individual and who is an appointed member of our government. And nothing could be done to reprimand him or to have him face any kind of consequences. In subsequent conversations, I had heard somebody come up and say, oh, well, this kind of thing is a form of retribution. That's not correct. It's not a form of retribution. It's consequences for actions or behaviors that have been taken. So if this thing is going forward with no consequences or no penalty for bad behavior, then we're back to where we were before this whole thing started. And that would be a huge disservice to the amount of people who came forward and said, we don't want this in our government. And so I want this thing addressed properly.
Anyone else here to speak? Yes.
My name is Jock Nash, Hampton District. I've lived here five years. And during those five years, I've been to innumerable ECA, town council, board supervisor, planning council, planning commission meetings, and just to find out how the government works in my new home, my forever home, by the way. I'm not leaving. In my earlier life, I spent seven years on the Senate Committee on the Judiciary. Every time an amendment was offered through a law, we knew who was sponsoring that amendment, who was the pushing party, who were the parties at interest. We also knew what was the evil to be remedied, and that was spelled out. That was spelled out way before the committee hearings on the Senate, so that the public could honestly comment. I went home after the earlier meeting today and went through Chapter 30. And I don't know who's offering these amendments. I don't know what the evil to be remedied is on each of these amendments. I don't know how to debate them because there's no rationale given. There are, we used to like to be very, very, very careful about who's covered by a new law. And we, we don't even mention the people. We mention things like constitutional officers and appointed people. I'd like to know every damn one of them. I want to know every individual that's in Rapid Hennick County who submitted this law. This got things in here that if I were a member of the Board of Supervisors, I would say, no way Jose, because it says, anything you've learned about any subject subject to your consideration that is not available to the public, you've got to make known to the public. I'd bet you a nickel that happens all the time. But we don't know that, and you're going to be subjected yourselves to this law or this rule that has no, as Sheila said, no punishment and no ability to enforce. Everything seems to be subject to opinion. I know I missed all the Rules Committee meetings because of a family tragedy, and I would have gone to them and listened to the arguments, and I missed all of that. But I can tell you, I don't need the Board of Supervisors or anybody else passing some sort of rule that would say that what Jock Nash says about somebody, or some official says something about somebody that's not even a member of this county, coming here and weaponizing my Board of Supervisors to put out some new Code of Conduct that, is Art Goff gonna enforce this? How are you going to enforce it? I've been to planning commission meetings, BCA meetings, and Board of Supervisors meetings where they add every darn condition you can imagine to zoning appeals and every other darn thing, and no way of enforcing it. I honestly, honest, in this reading, I only highlighted the really bad parts, but that was spend of six years of studying legislation. You're a legislative body. You must tell us, the citizens of this county, whether you've been here four or five years like me, or like some of the other members who've been here 40 years. I want to know if Mr., the chairman of the Board of Supervisors wants this, and this is his amendment, and why he wants it. I want to know those things. Otherwise, I can't comment. I hope, I hope you don't vote on this today. I hope you don't put yourself under these rules, because these are non-enforceable rules, and they'll be used to, it won't make this county any more civil. I've noticed that a lot of the people that are pushing for this civility have some of the most uncivil people imaginable. And I look at that and I go, who are they trying, what's the evil to be remedied here? Do they want, do they want a, you know, hamstring Conick? I don't even think Conick is subject to this. He's a judicially appointed person, so he's not even subject to it. But he's the raison d'etre for some people on this, on this board. They don't like him. I agree with that. There was a whole period of time when I didn't like Dave Conick at all. Now, I'll do anything for him, because that's just my personal opinion. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. I, I hope you don't, I hope you don't do some sort of final passage on this this evening, because all of the questions about who is sponsoring it, who's, who's the moving party, and what the evil to be remedied is, unless we can do that, the public can't, can't comment. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Al Regneri. I'm in the Hampton District, and I'm here to talk about the Code of Ethics. I'm the co-chairman of the United Citizens of Rapid Hennick, a new organization many of you know about that has formed a tribe that brings civility and good government to the county. We had a hand in drafting the Code of Ethics initially, excuse me, and we urged you to pass it and work with Mr. Goff in getting it written and acceptable. And then you all got a hold of it at the Rules Committee meeting. And Mr. Fraser, you particularly took it upon yourself to take all the sanctions out. And as it was written, we had a list of things that we had in it that were conventionally in Code of Ethics, and a list of sanctions, that things that you could do if somebody broke them. What you did was, initially, Mr. Fraser, you sat up there in the Rules Committee and you talked about due process, a rather frankly ridiculous conversation. Due process is something that is needed when rights are being taken away. But you didn't want any rights taken away. And so what the result was, what you argued for was after your due process conversation was, take all the sanctions out and we'll have the Code of Ethics there, but if we do anything wrong, nothing can be done about it. And frankly, I can't help but think that either you or somebody you were carrying water for was concerned that you were going to get the sanctions. And the rest of you went along with it. For us, it was a very disappointing exercise. The Code of Ethics basically is something that is for the benefit of the citizens of the county. But what you were concerned about was you. But maybe we will do something along with it. For God's sake, don't criticize us.
Why not order, Mr.?
I have the floor. Please let me finish. Could I?
Why not order? You do not have to point to any individual up here and say.
Well, I'm just talking about you, sir, because you were the one that raised the issue.
I am a member of this board, sir, and you're not.
I know. I am very well. I'm a citizen of the county, I'm a taxpayer, and I have, I recognize who you are, but at the moment, I have the floor. Do I not?
You do, but you do not have the right to insult anybody.
I'm not insulting anybody. I'm merely reporting what happened.
You are.
You may or may not, I don't. So let me go.
It's up to you. You've got to do something.
Anyway, I guess what I'm saying is that.
Page goes up here talking.
No, Mr. Chairman, he is assaulting a member of the board, and you're allowing that.
And Page did.
Well, let me just finish by saying as a, as the representative here of you board, and some of you know, we had a meeting yesterday of about 100 people there concerning, people that were concerned about what goes on in this county. We are very disappointed that you are enacting this Code of Ethics without sanctions in it, because we think it's a totally truthless document. And I think of analogies, and I think, let's say that the university came up with a Code of Ethics for students, and they make baskets for the students, and they say, what do you think the sanction should be? And obviously, the students would say, no sanctions. And they said, fine. That's sort of what you did. And I would hope that one of you would have the fortitude to stand up and make an amendment to this code and say, we're going to put the sanctions back in. The citizens of Rapid Hennick would be very, very happy if you would do that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, again, I believe you allowed someone to be out of place today. You allowed it earlier when Mr. Vasensky attacked him. I didn't attack anybody, Mr. Fraser.
I've got the floor.
Hey.
I have the floor now, don't I?
Well, you're attacking me. You jumped across Mr. Frank, Mr. Regneri when he was making his comments.
Listen, he attacked me. There's such a thing, 24 years in this board, I've never heard anybody use it until I have to pay for a private attorney to instruct me on it. There's such a thing called, and you should know this, sir, as an attorney, that we have legislative immunity. So the sausage making, if you will, is basically a protected thing. We can't sanction one another because we have an argument over what our personal beliefs are, our fundamental beliefs. We can't sanction one another for that. And if you don't like what I do as a member of the Rules Committee or a member of this board, then go out and get elected, sir. Don't come up here and point your finger at an elected body and tell us what you think. As a citizen, you have that right, but no more right than the other 72, 399 people, whatever, live here. You have no more right than they do. You're just another citizen, another taxpayer. Yes, sir, you are. But there's others here tonight. Well, I have to speak up. That's fine. That's what they're here for. But you do not have the right to come up here and attack me or any other member of this board. Yes, you did. I merely reported what you said. If you consider that some tack, I'm sorry. You gave us your flavor of it. I guess that's my right, yeah. I was on the Rules Committee. I was appointed by this board to work on that, and chairman and I worked together, but you singled me out. Well, you're the only one that spoke at the Rules Committee. What am I supposed to do? There were two of us there. Yeah, but you were the only one that said anything. You were there. You're not? You didn't say the same thing there. You just wanted an audience, I guess. I don't need an audience, Mr. Fraser. Apparently. Gentlemen, let's continue. Public, anybody else here to speak? Anybody else here to speak?
Teresa Wood. I am the president of businesses of Rapid Hennick, and I hesitate to follow that, but what I wanted to say is that I represent the entire board this evening, Jan Mackler, Melissa Schooler, Alfred Archer, and Sheila Waylake. And we would like to say thank you to the board supervisors who are working on the comprehensive plan. We recognize that it's a heavy lift, and we do, we appreciate the work that you're doing on it. With that said, we'd also like to ask you to continue to keep the business community in line as you work through this plan. We have a membership of over 200 people currently. These are business owners in our county for the most part. We have a few outside the county because we welcome neighboring counties. But again, these are the folks that are the lifeblood of the county. Without them, our, our way of life in this county would cease to exist. And quite frankly, a lot of them are on the verge. They are surviving, but they're not thriving, and they need your support. And so we ask you tonight to keep those business owners and those local businesses in line as you work your way through the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Anyone else here to speak?
Mr. Chairman, upon order, this is supposed to be on this and on other comment. We're getting them all confused here.
I agree.
My apology. I'm sorry if anyone knows that.
That's fine, but it should be for this topic.
Anyone have a public comment? Because mine was going to follow Teresa's.
Well, if no one else cares to speak.
There is a public comment on the agenda after the public hearing.
Good. I'll speak then. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll do that too. After the public hearing.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak? The public hearing closed. And then Chapter 1, Chapter 30, if you have anything to say.
If the board's in mind to approve the ordinance amendment, there is an ordinance provided for that purpose. The board could choose to close public hearing, which you did, and vote on this at a later meeting after reflecting on the input. You can vote now, or you could vote never.
So I haven't been paying a whole lot of attention to this, I admit. I gather that there are, most other counties have a Code of Conduct, correct?
Many do. Locally, I was last in, had Code of Conduct. It did not have sanctions involved.
Did not have sanctions, but did they have a Code of Conduct?
Yes.
So I'm guessing that most counties have a Code of Conduct, and some counties have sanctions and some don't. Right? We can do a study. And then we talked, I mean, there's no sanctions as far as I can gather here. The only sanctions we talked about was a misdemeanor. And I'm not sure how, how anybody would prove that, or what the process would be, or, you know, what is interrupting somebody, or what is denigrating a comrade. You know, how do you interpret that? You know, some of us have certain personalities that are not going to change no matter what. And. And so I got really mixed feelings about the whole thing. You know, part of me feels like, well, jeez, if we are not, I mean, what's the point of even, you know, having this if it doesn't really mean anything, if it doesn't prove anything, and what about all the little hidden things? I mean, now, typically, this is so difficult in local government, now that we're getting ready to vote on something, we get these fresh ideas, just like this happened with the comprehensive plan here lately. So it probably would be a good idea to not vote on this tonight, and to think about it a little more. It's obviously no emergency. If we vote on it now as it's presented, it's not going to really, in my opinion, necessarily change anything. So, and then also, why wouldn't the misdemeanor be the only type of sanction or, I've heard the repercussions? Would there not be some other thing that wasn't exactly legal, like, this is ridiculous, but like, you can't come to the next meeting because you were misbehaved at the last meeting, or, you know, whatever? You know, I mean, I do, I do think that this could span some more thought into it. So it's just, well, that's my stream of conscience about it tonight.
About the only thing that the board can do, other than, some of the sanctions that they, that this group wanted were removal of committee sanctions. Well, you can do that. The Code already allows you, the Code of Virginia has spelled that out. You don't have to have this to do that. And the other would be removal of any budgetary items that each member has. But we don't have a budget for each member. You know, like in Prince Willam, I think in 93, I had to, we had a supervisor down there for something related to something that we were working on down in that county. And they had an office, they had a staff person, so I imagine they had money for phones and office staff, and mailings and things like that. So, you know, you can do those types of things in larger counties, but do you really want to have your postage cut off?
I don't have any postage.
Exactly. So what is that going to do? So, I mean, the types of things that were talked about are irrelevant. We could pass it and put it in every one to it, it would have no effect for the next 30 years. So, and then again, the legislative immunity, what we talked about, the sausage-making is already protected. What we have.
The sausage-making?
The sausage-making. This is what we're doing right now, we're making the sausage. So if you say something and I don't like it, that doesn't mean that you transgress something, it just means that I don't agree with you. It may be a fundamental thing. Maybe you like blue cars, and I like red ones, I don't know. I mean, that's the one driving tonight, but I didn't pick it out, the kids did. You see what I'm saying? There's certain things that don't make any sense, so I don't know why you want to put it in here. But the biggest problem this board has is deference. We don't, we don't seem to have the respect for one another in this board here. We didn't get along, but we work together. You don't have to like my hairdo, but we ought to be able to work together.
I agree.
Contrary to public opinion, I used to have hair. Pretty hair, I've got pictures of it. But we ought to be able to work together. That's why we're not, we're not, the rubber's not hitting that road there.
Yeah, well, if this would help us do that, that would be good.
I don't see how.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that this was a model taken from Madison County. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Much improved, yeah.
All right. So it's not like this just dropped in, this was just created out of ether. This is something that Madison County has done, and I'm not saying we do everything like Madison, but it's something like Loster that exists and was adopted. I'm sorry, if there was ever an exhibit A for needing a Code of Conduct, it was just right here a couple of minutes ago. The exchange is just, whether you're talking about a member of the public or a member of this board, I just think, I don't think that's the way we want to communicate with each other.
And see, I think.
I have a floor, Mr. Fraser. And I'm going to remind you that I have the floor now because you were good enough to remind me when I tried to interject. So thank you, you were yield. I'm not for fines and penalties, et cetera, because who figures out what that is? I'm a board member, and then it just goes down the rabbit hole from there. So my question is simply this. What, and perhaps this is Mr. Goff, because it may be a legal concept, but what about the concept of censure? Does it need to be mentioned in this Code of Ethics in order to be something that this board can do? Censure does not take a vote away from any member, it does not take away their ability to attend or to debate. It is simply a statement which says that other board members do not agree with how certain member has conducted themselves on a particular matter. And that's my layman's explanation, I know there's probably a more legal explanation. So if there is going to be any quote-unquote sanction or quote-unquote punishment, my only thought was the tool of censure, and if it needs to be added in here, then it should be, but if it's something that is available because it's in the Code of Virginia or anywhere else, then maybe it does need to be added. So I don't know, Mr. Goff, is there, do you have any thought on it?
I think some of this was discussed, Mr. Fraser and I, debating some of these things in the Rules Committee, to a certain extent. And to use the formal word censure, yeah, you can do that because the Code of Virginia allows you to adopt rules and procedure to govern your own meetings, and that's what this is all about. The question is, how does that operate? One of the issues why I thought that it was a good idea, and I'll just expand on this for the whole board, to remove the misdemeanor aspect of this was because I think some of these rules that are in our ethics document as presented are constitutionally baked and unenforceable, as a criminal law matter beyond a reasonable doubt. I mean, it would be a nightmare to write the jury instruction, that the jury would have to find these facts in order to convict somebody beyond a reasonable doubt. On some of it, not all, some of it is rather straightforward. But on that aspect of it, I think Mr. Fraser has a point, that if, look, the misdemeanor part of it's going to be, you know, it's unwieldy. That brings us back to the idea of censure. Here again, and I've got some legislative folks that spend a lot of time up on Capitol Hill and love experience, it depends on how the motion's forwarded. We're back to another procedural point. I mean, there has to be some sort of concrete line of transgression. And the board, a member could file, and they probably should be, right, you can tell me if I'm wrong, Dr. A formal censure motion that says, on empty squat date, Mr. Member did X, Y, and Z in violation of Section Q of the Chapter 30 of the Rappahannock County Code, and therefore I move that the board have a hearing on, you know, whether or not to adopt a formal censure motion. And the censure motion, here again, is kind of toothless, because what you're saying is, we don't, we didn't like, we find that you violated this, we don't like what you do. But that doesn't remove anybody from office, that doesn't impose a fine, it doesn't remove any privilege or immunity that a board member attained by virtue of his membership of this board. You know, subject for a petition for removal, which is something here, again, that's judicial, and there's a whole set of things that have to be proven for that, it really, it's very difficult to come up with a workable sanction for the violation. So out of the Rules Committee, and Mr. Chairman and Mr. Fraser were there, along with Mr. Regneri and Mr. Brooks, I think it was the consensus that this was designed to be aspirational. This was designed to be not so much ten commandments with the, you know, the punishment for violation or transgression being held, but this was more like, kind of like a sermon on the mount, this is what we're going to aspire to be, this is what we're going to aspire to do, as a reaffirmation of values almost. That's what this was, I think, envisioned as, since it became quite clear as the discussions over how many meetings would we have, three or four, that imposing, drafting a set of sanctions for what are around the vague moral concepts and managed concepts was going to be almost impossible to do. I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but I think that if you're interested in what I think about it, I think that other counties do have these types of things, they are aspirational, they are things that reassure the public that these are our values, this is how we want to behave, and we want to follow these type of rules. I think if we could leave the concept that's been brought up at some point today about weaponization, I don't think that's what this is about. No one's, I think, trying to weaponize or punish anybody else. I think it is a sincere attempt to reassure the members of the public that we believe in a civil discourse, and we're going to try to adhere to these simple rules, the rules your mom taught you on how to play with others in the sandbox.
Mr. Goff, may I add one thing?
That's up to Mr. Chairman, sir.
I know, I know the public comment is all, I just wanted to add something about what we did.
Can you try to remember?
We'll be above the comments.
So that's, that's, that's what, that's what the Rules Committee struggled with, that's what any county board is going to struggle with when you're trying to police yourselves. So it's a rather difficult concept to, to, these concepts are hard to put teeth in because a lot of it is a matter of perception, and also too, you've got to remember that things do get heated because you're trying to have a spirited debate, and you don't want to enact something that is going to squelch spirited debate. Yes, you can go over the line, but that's what Mr. Chairman's here for, is to call everybody down. Somebody has to be in authority and be able to rule people out, or I can try to draft a censure motion aspect to this thing, send it back to the Rules Committee for further study and evaluation, I'll do whatever the board wants me to do. But at this point, I know we can do that aside from whether you pass this tonight or not.
I have one final question, Mr. Chairman. So if we were to pass this as an aspirational document, we call it that, amendment, that does not stop this board or a future board from coming back and changing in the future if they felt that they needed to add something else to it.
That's right.
Whether we can.
You have to advertise it for public hearing for two weeks in the paper and then anything else.
Yeah, it'd be subject to the same amendment process as any other part of our code.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I was reading the various drafts as they came through the Rules Committee to try to keep up. I wondered, is there anything in this Code of Virginia that actually empowers us to enact a Code of Ethics or a Code of Conduct? I did a word search on the PDF documents, and I found it applied to all sorts of professions, but I didn't find any such language that applied to, to local government boards, anything of that nature. And I was just wondering, do you happen to know that, Mr. Goff?
I, yes, the answer is that the Code of Virginia does empower local boards to adopt rules of procedure to govern the conduct of their meetings. And it's right at the beginning of the Code section, I don't know if, I think it's, I can't remember right, and I brought the wrong book tonight, but yeah, that's, and I can certainly email you, Ms. Smith, with the, with the code reference, and there's case law that says that, that as long as it doesn't violate the Dill rule, then, you know, rules of local procedure, you know, are adopted. And of course, that's been, that's been the practice in common to adopt these things. And as Mr. Parrish pointed out, a lot of other counties have these things, in fact, he said, this one comes from Madison. So I'm not aware of any authority that says we can't do it, I'm aware of authority that says we can adopt rules of procedure, and I think this is fairly classified in that, in that little basket of procedure.
And then in terms of if we did want to add something along the lines of sanctions, I mean, it was advertised not to include those things. So if there's an inclination to add those things, we would need to re-advertise.
You'd have to re-advertise and have another public hearing, because you'd be affecting an amendment to the Rappahannock County Code. So the same 2204 notice that we had to do for tonight, you'd have to do for a subsequent amendment.
1427.
1427, you're right, this isn't something.
I mean, I think it's a bit of a quandary, that the group that presented us with this topic now doesn't want the output of the Rules Committee. And yet, to give them what they would want this evening, we're unable to do because we didn't advertise it in that way. That makes me think that the best course forward might be to table it and to try to figure out what the best course of action might be, and see if there is some middle ground. I don't want to vote on something and then turn back around and be back in another public hearing, or 60 or 90 days, over something we've just done. Why not send it back down to the Rules Committee, table it and send it back down to the Rules Committee, and work on the document a little bit more, and see if we can get something that would, you know, actually gain some consensus.
If it were my advice, this, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, please go ahead.
That if there were going to be substantial alterations, I would still recommend that they be re-advertised.
Oh, absolutely, of course.
And then the public hearing reopened, because I just think that if you talk about structural or significant alterations to this document, you know, I would worry that the public hasn't been adequately apprised of what the action is that's going to be taken. So, and I don't know if Mr. Curry agrees with that position or not, but that would be my advice to you as your attorney, that you re-advertize substantial. Now, if you're talking about moving commas and insubstantial things, I just think we're okay.
I think what you need to think about is, citizens who read the materials online, we know they all go to Board Docs every month, look at what you're about to do, and they read this, and they say, well, that's, that's good, I don't have an issue with that, and they don't show up for your public hearing. You may have people that fall into that category, so you may find that you have a public hearing for a different version, and a different group of people come out and say, why are you doing that?
Right.
So you can't draw two muddy inferences, you only know what people tell you in the room about the piece of paper, and when you advertise a different piece of paper, completely different people may come and talk to you about that.
Well, Mr. Curry, I think we do need something, to start with something at least aspirational, and I think the Rules Committee has worked on this, and the county attorneys worked on this, so I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance to amend in Chapter 1, general provisions in Chapter 30, meetings of the Rappahannock County Code as is presented before this board tonight. I do believe that we, I don't, we need to, we need to get something out of books for this county. I'm not, I'm not seeing things changing until, you know, we put a, we draw some kind of line in the sand here, and if it gets changed later on, then so be it, but I think we need something now, and so I put that motion forward.
I was going to make a comment. It's not really a valid idea, because it's not mine, but during transfer mission BVA training to be certified, part of the curriculum was you had to attend two meetings in nearby jurisdictions. So if you're a planning commission member, you would have to attend one in, say, Falkirk or Falkir, or Warren and Falkir, whatever. It's not really a valid idea, but why can't each one of us go attend another board meeting in nearby communities and see how they act? And we can report back.
You can probably watch it on television.
You probably do, yeah.
I was at Frederick County Board Supervisor's meeting just two or three weeks ago. But I, I don't know, I have to think they act a lot better than we do, and I agree with you, Mr. Fraser, you know, it's all right that we don't agree with each other, you and I do agree on everything. Say, say what you're, I think people would be surprised to see how much we do agree on.
Personal insults could stop them.
But we, yes, they could, they certainly could, couldn't they? So we just have to figure out how to communicate more civilly, and I think we do need to get something out there into the community. This has been worked on, keep kicking things back to committees, nothing gets done, you're asking that perfect be the enemy of good, and this is, this is very good, probably not perfect. So I have a motion on the floor, and we'll see what other board members feel about it. And I appreciate the work that the Rules Committee has done on this, they've worked hard, and they've included members of the public, and the members of the public have had an opportunity to comment and contribute, so we are not doing this in a vacuum, and we are not doing this in closed back rooms. We have a product here, and I think it's a good start, and that's why I put that motion forward. And that's why I put that motion forward.
If this, if this, that, that, I mean, to, to work on again, we're going to have to have a re-advertising.
If the Board wanted to adopt this particular ordinance amendment, you failed your public hearing, I believe the motion would be in order in a subsequent meeting as well.
Yes.
So if we didn't vote on it tonight, we went home, came back next month, decided, yeah, okay, we're not going to really do any better than this, we could vote on it then.
Correct. If you wanted, and as Mr. Goff said, if you were to mind to change the ordinance amendment significantly, if you were to change it and want to consider it changed, you'd have to re-advertise because you want the public to know that you're. I would just add that if there is a vote tonight on this, your Chapter 30 will control who can bring it back to vote, right?
I know it's overdue, but I wouldn't.
I'll make the motion then to table and talk next meeting, unless you want to.
We're going to fail for lack of a second. We don't need another motion for that. As the case, we fail for the lack of a second. Bring it back next month.
I don't believe any formal motion is necessary to table. If the hearing is closed, that's an important distinction, and that the Board can now act as subsequent meeting.
Right. And this is, let's re-stress, if we're going to structurally modify this thing in some significant way, then I do believe that the public will be entitled to notice of that.
All right, let's go to the next step, that's a public comment. Is that correct? Public comment, just about, can you, something?
Yes, just very quickly, let me add to, um, name, uh, I'm sorry, Al Regnery from the Hampton District. When we drafted the code initially, we were very careful that there was nothing in it that first of all was not authorized by the Virginia law. And secondly, there were no sections in it that were not used by a number of other jurisdictions. So whatever you do, if you go back to the original draft that we did, you'll find it would be consistent to say, first of all, with the Virginia statutes, and secondly, with a number of other jurisdictions in the, in the law.
Anyone else care?
Al Henry Hampton District. Looking at the agenda today, I didn't want to call him by asking questions, so I thought it would be common tonight about the six-year road plan. And last year I was here about, about a run, and all of these people expressed their disapproval to pave the, uh, the road. And we provided the county administrator with 100% of the lead, but the people who front on Battle Road that they're opposed to it, understand next month that there's going to be a public comment on this, and I guess there'll be a little bit of a public show for everybody at that public hearing. So basically, 100% of the people who front on Battle Road are just happy the way it is. And the second item is that, you know, we, we hear a lot about the government and how they handle the committees and different things, and behavior, and, and all these kind of things. And, you know, I, I pondered some thoughts back there that settled the Board for a long time with Planning Commission. It seems like we have always been kind of wrong, and there've been people on the Board over the years that had different opinions than other people, and we've expressed them. And I think sometimes too, that legitism, adversity can sometimes because of hostile comments from the public that may bleed over and affect the waters. But I think too about, we all know how to act at funerals. I think we all know how to act in church. I sometimes go to Episcopal church on Methodist. I know the routine at Episcopal's a little bit different. We kneel a whole lot, Methodist don't kneel. And, but I respect the different methods of worship. I'm not too familiar with the Catholic Church. I don't speak Italian or Latin. And I guess we all just have to work a little bit better. But anybody that thinks that Rappahannock County is really to be a problem, all they need to do is, is look at Warren County. It seems like every time I get the Northern Virginia Daily, you know, it seems like the jails should be filled over there with public officials for misappropriations and wine and stealing and everything. And it's almost like there was nobody on, in the, on the ship watching what was going on. So we don't, we've got good government here, and it's discussion at the top, and sometimes it gets heated. And I guess you see times in Congress and state legislation where things get heated. So maybe a little heat's okay, but I think all the structure that we have here is just.
I'm Heidi Lusinski from the Hampton District, and I didn't plan to speak tonight until a member of the BVA, I won't name names, just spoke, claiming that we have a level of civility in Rappahannock County that is sufficient to not require a code of ethics. I wholeheartedly disagree. During a BVA meeting a couple of years ago, I was shouted down by that very member of the BVA. I learned after the meeting, when I asked him what was going on, that I was not allowed to speak because my husband was running for the Board of Supervisors. I said, pardon me? He said, the reason you're in my face right now is because your husband is running for the Board of Supervisors. I'm sorry, sir, but I think that was incredibly uncivil. When I called the people in charge of the county at the time, I was informed that there was absolutely nothing that they could do about that man's behavior in spite of the fact that they completely agreed with me, that it was completely egregious. I urge you to pass whatever it is that you need to pass. I would love to see teeth in it. You need a code of ethics. You need a code of ethics. Thank you.
Sheila Bressinger, Hampton District. This is a PS to what I said before. The discussion of the Board seemed to be a little misunderstanding of how the Code of Ethics discussion came about. It was not about uncivil behavior or shouting out in disagreements, which does occur at this Board. It was about a specific other member with documented paperwork about behavior that was unbecoming to anyone that we would want to be as an official in our government. And so we wanted a code of ethics that would be broad enough or would be able to be used with all elected officials and appointed officials. That was the whole purpose of it. It wasn't just for this specific group. And it needed to have something because when we were talking about the specific litany of unsavored behaviors and actions and words, including a threat against me, physical violence, which I didn't appreciate, which, I remind everyone, I did report to the Sheriff's Office, there was no way that this Board could do anything to reprimand that specific person who was the subject of all the outlaw and unhappiness that was going on. And they did finally, I think, uh, figure out how to do a letter of reprimand. Here, here's the thing. There has to be some kind of consequence for, for behavior. Whether this can be, it can be as simple as being able to do a letter of reprimand or to be able to issue a censure, and I'm not sure of the legal, because that is going to put a cloud on that person's record. That is a consequence of, of a behavior, and, and that's the thing that needs to be done. It's, it's a very, it's a very, it's not punitive, really. And I will tell you that once all that uproar came about, this person's very erratic, but the disclaimer that he then started putting on RappNet was a way for him apparently to completely absolve him of anything he might say in the future. But he wasn't quite clever enough because I found something that I could use against him if I ever wanted to again. I'm not going to tell you what it is, because he's clever, but he's not that clever. The only other thing I want to say is, as far as the comprehensive plan, I've mentioned this before, the comprehensive plan is a general document. And according to the Code of Virginia, it's to be reviewed and adapted every five years. And this is, this can be done. I went to the Planning Commission meeting, and at, at the end of that specific discussion, Chairman Light did say, in light of, didn't plan words, in light of the public comment, he did see the gaps in that plan, in the draft. And they would address that at the next work session, session, which would be broadband and affordable housing. And I think he also said something about tourism, but I, I really can't remember. I'd have to watch the video. So those things are being addressed in a work session, and I think that's going to be the way to go. And then go ahead and, and get that approved with a public comment, public hearing, I guess is what you call it. And then we'll be on our way to be able to have a plan for the next four years. I think it's, it's proper to get that thing on the table. And it has been acknowledged that affordable housing is definitely something needs to be done, and the broadband, because that's going to then address so many things. It's going to address the housing that we need for all ages, for older people, for younger people. It's going to address the broadband, which is going to be very critical for increasing our economic welfare. Just as an aside, I was talking to a couple who's here tonight, and they said they had neighbors who had a son and, son and daughter-in-law thing, who wanted to start a business here, but they didn't have access to fast internet, so they couldn't do it. So that's something that's holding us back. And so that's something that's very important to be addressing, and that is going to be addressed. And I applaud everybody for the work that they've done to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Board. One of the things that has not been addressed in any of your subsequent comments was that to let lay, laypeople or citizens of the county know who's subject to this, this new rule, if, if you were to take it up next month and pass it, it does say, you know, people that are appointed and so on and so forth. It's just also the, the, the people that give out the building permits? Is that, is that clerks? Is it, who, who is subject to this law? Because they should know. And when we, Al Regnery, I, I've known Al Regnery for over 30 years. In fact, he was chief counsel on Senate Judiciary Subcommittee when I replaced him. I stayed here four more years after that. But he and I have been friends for a long, long time, and we're still, still to one another, even though we did agree on the bike trail, and we sure as heck don't agree on, on this code of conduct. I believe that all of us, as, as men and women of this county, can pretty much take care of our own private affairs. If some private affairs, for one reason or another, come to the, come to the, come to this, the Board of Supervisors, like the email from David Conick to a citizen of another county, then, then I think that you've stepped off on the wrong foot. Because any of us that ever would want to be part of our county government or wanted to participate in that would be subject to some sort of nanny state here that's going to protect us rather than just the First Amendment. And if you proceed with something like this, there'll, there'll be pushback, and Art Bob is going to have to take out the constitutional law books because he knows every comment that you made, I agree with. Relative to this aspirational code of conduct. It's not enforceable, clearly not in a court of law. But if, if you guys want to do censures and do all that, go ahead. Go ahead and do that. But, but if you want to make it part of the criminal law, or misdemeanor, or something denying anybody any right that they have as an American citizen, then, then, then you're going to get pushback, and, and you're going to find out in the next elections. And that's the way it's going to be. Because none of us in this county, you know, have, have the license plate here, don't trade on me. And there's a lot of us that believe that, believe that in our soul. And we don't need anybody here on the Board of Supervisors. I know because I've been to every meeting, well, so many meetings, probably 100 meetings, where I know of conflicts of interest among Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, BVA. Never were, no, no one read the word about them. And it was a good old wave circuit. And I worried about that when I first came here. So I wanted to go to every government meeting I could go to because I'm a come here. I don't want, I don't want to get a zoning thing approved or not approved because I'm a come here. I want the law to tell me and to direct the BVA and the Board of Supervisors to what can and cannot be done, and not whether they're right or not right for somebody here. And I'll fight for that, and I'm not going anywhere, as I said earlier. And again, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for, for your time and, and.
Anyone else care? Anyone else?
Just one more time, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to respond to Jac. We have been friends for a long time. I, as he said, we both worked together in the U.S. Senate. Jac, you need to read the thing very carefully. Let me first of all tell you who we perceive to apply to this code of ethics. If this Board enacts it, it applies to this Board.
You would direct your comments to the Board.
I am, yes, okay, I'm sorry. The, just to clarify, as we drafted the code, and what our perception was, was that as soon as this Board adopts it, it would apply to the five of you plus everybody who is employed through the Board. It would not apply, for example, to the BVA because they are separately appointed. They would have to pass their own code, which could be just the same or not as they chose. And the same with the Sheriff's Office, with Mr. Bob's offices. They're separately elected, they're house two officers. This code, as, as the Board adopted it, would not apply. What our intention was, was ultimately it would, or something very close to it, would apply to every elected, appointed, and employed person in the county. And that was really for the benefit of the taxpayers, of the constituents of the county. So they would have the confidence that officials in the county were acting in their best interests. There was certainly nothing that applied to the criminal laws specifically. The question of a misdemeanor was taken out of it. It wasn't in it anyway, but I think that simply clarified it. The rest of the sections, as I mentioned before, were all in strict compliance with the Virginia statutes, with what other people did, not only in Virginia but across the county. So I don't think there's anything in it that could be considered unconstitutional. It could be considered outside the law of Virginia. So it, it really was not very much different than what hundreds of other, maybe the thousands of other counties across the country do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, may I?
Bill Borski, Hampton District. I have one question to the county administrator. I have one question to the county administrator. Is the requirement of obtaining a zoning permit before the building permit, has it been enforced?
The board won't hear the response. I think she asked me. Well, I know she asked me, but this is a public comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure I fully understand whether it's been enforced. That's what the code says, and that is what we're doing right now.
You are, okay. So you're getting all the information, what the purpose of the building is going to be and how it's going to be used, or what purpose, et cetera. As specified in my, I can remember that. No, no, but one seventy dash or maybe six or seven. So you have to have all the...
What use is being requested on the permit application? And that is the use that the functionality of the building would be measured against. Should somebody just require or request a permit for a single-family residential dwelling and then operate it as a hotel, then there's a compliance matter.
Right, right. So those things are being enforced now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? I declare public comment closed. You have a motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn and second, although the thing would stay on?
On.